All right, the clock has struck six o'clock. And I'll start with calling the meeting to order. Stand and pledge allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a great meeting ahead of us, and thank you all for joining us tonight. If we could start off with administrator's report on the agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
The agenda was posted at the Three Lakes School, the Sugar Camp School in the town of Sugar Camp, the town of Three Lakes via email, and the town of Monaco via email, and the Demer Library. Media notified by email included the Phylis County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, thank you for that report. And any amendments for tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Not going to cut it in half?
Only if you want to take a vote.
Careful what you ask. All right, I will seek a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, the agenda is signified by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion passes four zero. Next, we have approving the minutes of the February fifteenth, 2023 regular meeting. So we're prepared to make a motion on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February fifteenth, 2023 regular meeting. Second.
All right, motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. Any other questions, comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signified by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion passes four zero. Next, we have approving the voucher slash check register for the period of February tenth, 2023 through March ninth, 2023.
I'll make the motion to approve checks stated February tenth, 2023 through March ninth, 2023, for accounts payable checks number two-two-two-three-zero-zero-one-seven-one through two-two-two-three-zero-zero-two-zero-five, regular checks number one-two-seven-seven-eight-six through one-two-seven-nine-three-six, with voided check number one-two-seven-seven-seven-six, and manual checks number five-four-two-nine through five-four-four-one in the amount of six hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and fourteen cents, and ACH payroll checks number nine-zero-zero-zero-three-nine-six-two-six through nine-zero-zero-zero-three-nine-eight-five-zero, and regular payroll checks number five-nine-two-seven-three through five-nine-two-eight-three in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars and thirteen cents for a total amount of nine hundred forty-five thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second.
All right, so motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signified by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four zero. Next, we go to public comments. Would anyone wish to comment on a agenda item? Terry?
Cue, please.
Cue.
Are we doing that now or later?
We will let you be patient and we'll wait until cue. Any others? All right, very good. We'll move on to administrator's report. Start off, Terry, with visit with legislators.
Okay. I've been keeping you updated this past year that myself and some other superintendents in our area have been trying to be much more action-filled and collaborative with our legislators because there is so much that has to be dealt with, especially at the budget level and the lawmaking level. So we had decided that the legislators have made a point of coming to visit us at CISA three times a year. So myself, Scott Foster from Northland Pines, Al Betri from CISA nine, and then Julie Sprague from Anago, and Andrea Sheridan from Edgar, we went down to Madison on March second, and we had an appointment to meet with Mary Felskowsky, and also there was a representative for Pat Snyder, and then it just worked out that we were able to meet with Rob Swearingen as well. So we go there with a purpose, not just to shoot the breeze, but the three topics that we really talked about a lot was, first of all, 4K. How 4K funding is very important and that we need the full FTE funding when they're looking at that rather than what is currently in place as a point-six funding. And it also requires more coverage from paraprofessional staff. And it seemed like that was very well received. The questioning that has been going on the past two years is, is it putting independent daycares out of business? There's been a tremendous shift in the state, as any of you who have kids or are involved in childcare in some way know, there's a long wait list, it's very hard to get childcare, and we're saying that this is part of an educational program, but it's education by play, and it's still about respecting the child as a four-year-old. So that really felt like it had some traction and support across, you know, both aisles that was reported to us. We also talked a lot about the report cards, and that is the state report cards, and how that we have to be very careful that what is reported in state data is not telling the whole story and that how districts are working very hard to make sure that our own individual stories are told. Some of the districts in our CISA are doing what they call a local report card. We in Three Lakes haven't done that yet. We do have a lot of information that we put out and intend to share. I would like us to get to that point, that's something that is coming. But I also think we are unique and individual, and we don't want to just, you know, force fit into something that's a template. So we're working on that to keep our individual stories, especially in rural northern Wisconsin, told because it is very different than the southeastern part of the state. And then talking about transportation, again, the high cost of transportation for our very large districts in the north compared to some districts in the southern parts of the state that encompass an entire two-mile area, their whole district is two miles. And then we've got Lakeland Union, Northland Pines, us, we're talking hundreds of miles a day that have to be covered. And it still costs that money to run that bus, whether we have two students that have to be picked up or ten or fifty, you know, so. And that seems like it has gotten the attention. We've been getting some categorical aid for that. They're looking for a way to maybe make it even a little bit more favorable for us in the Northwoods, but of course, everything's negotiation, and we got to talk about it, and we felt that that was heard. So overall, I felt it was a really good meeting. The Northland Pines Choir was down there performing, so we got to watch them as well. And as I said, Representative Swearingen, he was able to step out with what he was doing, and it was informal, but we got to catch up with what was happening in the Northwoods. And it was, I think, it was a long ride for, you know, a shorter meeting, but I think it was well worth the investment of time. As I keep saying, I think it's a lot more important that when our legislators are in the presence of having to talk to others, when they see the faces of the people who are bringing the concerns rather than it's just a document or an email. And we were treated like we were good old friends, I got to tell you. It really felt nice that we were recognized and appreciated. So, you know, I think it was well worth the time, and I just look forward to continuing to build those collaborative relationships regardless of the political party that one might belong to.
Yeah.
So that's it.
Yeah. Yeah, hard to build relationships any other way.
Right.
So, yeah, well done. All right. So next, you have report on the bee project.
This is probably one that people are saying, what is this about? Because this is rather new and development. This is going to be a project that Mr. Stotts is working with us on. It really ties nicely into our science curriculums. And through the Fish and Wildlife of Three Lakes, we are going to get bees, and we're going to study bees. And a donation was made by the Fish and Wildlife Group to get us started. It really works nicely into our curriculum. We've, a lot of pre-training has been done with this. The money is going to fund getting two hives, which actually, the beekeeper people have to travel all the way to California to pick up the bees, which I had no idea. I mean, this is really a big, I'm learning a lot here. And you bring the bees back, and we will have a designated safe area, you know, not smack dab in the middle of the playground or anything, but where it's going to be by our fruit trees and everything because it's all part of we're trying to become more self-sufficient and sustainable, you know, and help our students learn about that. And so we'll be having these bee hives, and Dave and the crew is going to help us with fencing. And I hear there's some good ideas, like in case a bear would come investigate, like sirens would go off, maybe to play some real hard rock music and, you know, Led Zeppelin or something come on and scare the bears away. That's what I'm hearing, I'm just sharing. And then they told us if everything goes well, you know, we'll get through the winter, but not to be surprised if our bees die because that's kind of common when you're getting going with this. Northland Pines has been doing this for a while, so we have a really good resource there. Luke is very excited about it, and the funding that they're presenting to us will allow us not only to do what I shared, but we'll be able to have fifteen bee suits, some large ones for our high schoolers, as well as probably five of the smaller, don't quote me on the exact number, but for like the upper elementary because we're hoping to grow this. The potential of getting into not only the science, but the business of honey or honeycomb or beeswax is very exciting. So I think it's always neat when we can do something that's rather innovative and unique and tying us to nature. So that's one to come, like now.
That's a great idea. We've been involved in bees on our farm, and we would get our bees in by mail. And usually would come in on a Saturday morning, and the post office would call us and want us to be there as soon as we possibly could. They were not comfortable for some reason with this box of buzzing bees. But yeah, great opportunity for our students, it's amazing. And thanks to the Three Lakes and Fish and Wildlife Association for their donation and interest in the project, so.
Yes.
All right. Next, we go to new business. Consider filling vacancy on the Board of Education. And this might take a little bit of time here, but for good reason. We have a vacancy that we're filling tonight from former board member Terry McCloskey. And we have four applicants, and I believe three of them are here. Mariah Gross, Susan McCloskey, Alicia Williams, and Brian Fritz. Is Brian is not here? Okay, all right. So because this vacancy of our, the vacant seat falls within the seat's term, certain rules will apply. The winning applicant tonight fills a short-term appointment. This unexpired seat will again be open in April 2024, and at that time, any qualified elector can decide to run as a candidate as well as a person that becomes appointed tonight. In April 2024, there will be actually two full three-year term seats open and this unexpired seat that we are considering to fill tonight for a total of three open seats. The top two candidates in April twenty-four, so that's a regular spring election, the top two candidates will fill the full three-year term seats. The candidate with the third highest total will fill the unexpired seat until that seat expires in April of 2025. So tonight, we are filling a short-term appointment lasting approximately thirteen months. All of you have the opportunity to run for the seat in the April 2024 election. And I want to thank each of our applicants for coming forward and seeing their interest in becoming a board member in the Three Lakes School District and your willingness to serve and provide the best opportunities for our students. So the process will begin, and I've asked each of our board members to come up with four questions. And so none of us know what the others' questions are, and we will be putting them into the basket here shortly. And so what we'll do is, the three applicants that we have here tonight, we will be asking you, one at a time, for a opening statement. We'll ask you one of the selected questions out of the basket and provide you with time for a closing statement. So approximately two minutes for an opening, up to two minutes to answer the question, and up to two minutes for a closing statement. And while the one applicant is doing the presentation, we're going to ask the other two to hang out in the office near, so we can just focus in on the one applicant and provide, I think, an atmosphere of fairness for everyone. So I guess at this point here, we'll start with drawing numbers to see which of the applicants will go first. And so we can, or just put names in the hat there, that would work too, so. So after these three presentations, we will proceed then with the voting procedure. And we have certain steps that we will be following through in that regard. And so I guess when we get to that point, I'll go through that so everything is fresh for all of us, so.
Carrie, you want to shake these up for us and make sure they're all?
Kido.
Thank you.
Okay, so we got names in there?
Yep.
Okay, we'll let the clerk pull those names out. So the first one will be?
Susan McCloskey.
Okay. Number two?
Alicia Williams.
Okay. And guess who's number three? Very good. All right, so if I could ask Alicia and Mariah, if you would please step into the room next door, how's that? Okay, so Susan?
Yes, sir.
You are the first, and we will provide you with an opportunity, up to two minutes, to provide an opening statement on your behalf.
Hello, everybody. You better time because I could probably get long-winded, unlike my dad. It was funny hearing them talk before the meeting, you know, about the agenda items. And I can tell you, living in the same household with my dad who served, I could not believe how late they would stay some evenings. So I was like, do I really want to do this? Twelve-thirty? I really started to worry about my dad. But in terms of why I'm here, as you know, my dad was Terry McCloskey, and he's devoted, boy, I'm going to try to get through this without crying. He devoted his life up here. And so when he passed away, and we often used to talk about it, I said, you know, I'm going to run after you, not thinking he was going to die, but, you know, I'm going to run after you and carry on the legacy. And so that's why I'm basically doing this, to honor my dad and to continue his service to the community. But it's, I want you guys to know, I also feel that I have something to bring to the school. I have a degree in education, secondary education, I'm an entrepreneur. There was something else I was going to say. So I really feel like I can, you know, contribute to the things that the school is doing based on my background and what I've done. So I'm not asking to serve because, you know, I want to fill my dad's seat. I'm also asking, I actually should be talking to you guys, you are the voters.
Okay.
Anyway, so it's not just that, that's very important to me and my family, but also I think I would be an asset to the board.
All right, very good. All right, thank you for that opening statement. And our first question is, let's see, if we get all of our questions in there.
I remember the other thing I bring to the board. I have a career in law enforcement. I was a federal agent for ten years. And so I can bring that expertise in grand jury testimony and lawyers and all that. I have one over my two on the card.
You had about twelve seconds left.
All right.
Okay.
All right. Why do you think public schools are important? Oh, wow. Well, again, I'm going to have to defer to my dad. It was never a question, even when we moved to Mississippi. Mississippi my dad got transferred to. And the public schools there are not known for educating students well, but my parents were still committed, and they felt like, you know, a lot of education happens at home. So they said, you're going to the public schools. And it's true, and we did just fine, and, you know, all of the kids excelled in their careers. So I think it's, I think it's very important to be able to give all children the same education, which is what you can do at a public school, right? Because private schools are whatever, you have to pay to go to. But public school gives all kids, hopefully, an equal, an equal start.
All right. Okay, well, thank you for that response. And we will give you up to two minutes for a closing statement, Susan.
Well, I was hoping this was going to run a little bit differently, and you guys were going to like ask questions. And so I didn't necessarily come prepared for that. But I guess to sum up what I had said before, I also have a sports background. I'm very excited about being able to maybe, you know, lend my expertise to all of those sorts of things. I played semi-professional softball in Italy on an all-Italian team. I also, I told you about my education degree. I've done a super lot of teaching over the years, not in a school though. It was funny, but when you're a teacher, you're a teacher. I became a federal agent, and then I became firearms instructor to teach, you know, to call the course and to, which was not a female-dominated field. And then, when I became an entrepreneur, I owned a nationwide nanny company. And so what did I do? I started teaching CPR to the nannies. So teaching's just kind of always been, you know, a part of what I do. And I can see, I don't know if school board members are allowed to do that, but I can see offering some of my skill set to qualify the teachers in CPR or maybe even teach the students, and, because that's kind of a big thing to learn how to save a life. And the way that I teach it is not memorization. I tell everybody, forget memorizing. You know how long you're going to remember that? When you get out to your car. And we're talking about saving a life. So I want you to understand it, because I believe if you understand, you own that information for life. If you memorize it, you know it heading out to your car, and then you forget it. So anyway, there's all those, a variety of things as you get to know me that you'll see that I think that I can offer, other than my last name.
Very good, very good. All right. So with that, Susan, we will ask you to trade places. That's right. And we'll be asking Alicia to join us.
This is probably not the safest way, right?
We'll be asking Alicia the same question.
Yep.
You can sit wherever you feel comfortable. Very good, Alicia, thank you for joining us here. And so again, the format to our time here is, we're going to give you two minutes for an opening statement, and then we will ask the same question to you that we asked Susan. And then following that, two more responses, we will give you up to two minutes for a closing statement. So we can start with your opening statement, I guess, whenever you're ready.
Okay, can I dance? My name is Alicia Williams. A quick overview of who I am. Born in Park Falls, raised in central Wisconsin, graduated from Wyegua Fremont High School in Opakakami. I'm active in high school sports. I did a year at UW-Oshkosh before entering military service. I've been in the Wisconsin Army National Guard since 2003. In that time, I was an intelligence analyst, served in multiple roles, multiple tours overseas for Operation Iraqi Freedom. I entered civilian service after my years of active duty. I did about six years of active duty in the National Guard. Transitioned to private security contracting over in Bagdad. Followed up into a law enforcement career. Went to WSA, to the Technical College, to get my law enforcement certification. I've been a law enforcement officer since 2012, so just over ten years. I started my career at Ryan Lander Police Department, transitioned to the Oneida County Sheriff's Office. In that time, I became a chief warrant officer for the Wisconsin National Guard. I hit my twenty years in August. I'm currently the commander for the Warrant Officer Candidate School for the State of Wisconsin. So I teach, coach, and mentor future warrant officers for the US Army. In my full-time role, I am currently assigned as a school resource supervisor for Ryan Lander School District, which has kind of sparked the interest to come here tonight. And a third job, I am an adjunct instructor for Nicolai Technical College, so I teach in their law enforcement academy. Defense and arrest tactics, ethics, officer wellness, and physical fitness. So personally, I am married, I have two children, both in this district, one at Sugar Camp, nine years old, one here as a freshman, fifteen years old. That's me in a nutshell, I'm busy. I would like to do more on the volunteer side of things, but a lot of my volunteer activities have been centered around National Guard and law enforcement services.
They've been centered on what?
National Guard and law enforcement service.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Very good. All right, and the question that we have?
Why do you think public schools are important?
This is two minutes? So just like your motto says, right? Personal education inspiring future, right? As a law enforcement officer, I especially know how important education in this system is because I don't want today's schoolchildren to be next year's law enforcement population or concerns. So I think it starts from the ground up to ensure that we create productive citizens who get back to their communities and who are willing to do more because years down... who get back to their communities and who are willing to do more, because years down the road, I hope that all of us can retire and ensure that we're turning the torch to people who are capable and can continue the environment that we have here in the district.
And you have two minutes for a closing statement.
Okay. This is a whole new thing for me. I had thought about putting in for school board after I was done with National Guard service, which I only have two years remaining for that service. But this opportunity came up, and I thought about it. I talked to my kids and my husband to see if it could fit into our life and what we have going. And I think that I'm at a stage where I haven't had a whole lot of volunteer time, so if there's one thing I could do to give back to Three Lakes, who gives to my children every single day. I'm a transplant, I didn't grow up here, but what I've been able to give to my children in Sugar Camp, and the resources, and the family-oriented programs, and things that we have up here, I wanna be part of protecting that. And I think this is a way I can bring back, I've served a lot of leadership and supervision roles throughout my career, and I just want to be able to do that in a manner that ensures not only my children, but future children have that same framework here in the district going forward.
All right, very good. Okay, Alicia, thank you so much, and we're gonna ask you to trade places.
Thank you so much.
All right. Where would you like to be? Wherever you would like to be comfortable.
Do I have to stand, or do I sit?
You have that option as well, so.
Be on an even playing field? Okay.
All right, so to rehearse the format, we're gonna give you two minutes for an opening statement. We have a pre-selected question that came out of the basket that we've asked the previous two applicants. You will answer the same question, and then you'll have up to two minutes for a closing statement.
All right.
So if you would like to start with the opening statement, you have up to two minutes.
All right. Well, you think I would've planned more in there, but I was having a really great time talking with the other candidate. My name's Mariah, I go by Mo, but you can call me either, because Gross is an unfortunate last name, but it's why I married into it. As some of you may know, my dad is Don Phelps, my mom still works here at the school, her name's Anita. So I grew up in the school, I graduated in 2012, was very proud to be a Blue Jay, and I promised myself, though, I'm never coming back to this small town. Well, it turns out the small town's actually really great, has a really good school district, and I'm proud to say that my son will be starting 4K here in the fall. So I really wanted to have that connection to the school, and being on the school board would be a great opportunity to be more involved. As like a younger generation, I could probably bring some things, new things to the table. I don't know all the hip, like, Gen Z slang, though, so I'm still working on that. But yeah, I'm just excited to be here, a little nervous, but yeah, I just feel like, with my background as a Three Lakes student, and then I went on to college as a social worker, and I work as a community health specialist now, so I have background working with a variety of populations, from adults with disabilities to children to the elderly. So I've got a good amount of experience in my belt in that sense. So thanks, thanks for listening.
All right. All right, so our question...
Why do you think public schools are important?
So with public schools, there's, it's like, everybody's like on the same level, like, whether you're, you come from the richest family with the, like, the biggest name, or you come from the trailer park. It doesn't matter, everybody is equal, like, the public school, it has the same, same things to offer for everybody. And it's wonderful that it's not something we have to pay for. With private schools, while they can be great, it is like a for-profit, so it's not the same. And I feel like with public school as well, the students get a different and better environment, where they get to be around everybody who's different from them and face, like, face that adversity in a way that's more beneficial. So private school, you know, aside from possibly the scholarship children, they are all coming from a higher level of income. So just, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty biased towards public school, though. I mean, Three Lakes is pretty great, and just as a whole, like, I feel like public school has a lot more to offer, despite the barriers with funding and everything else.
All right, Mariah, and a closing statement, you have up to two minutes.
So I am really bad at two-minute limits. I think I could probably cut it back in like 30 seconds, but as I said before, I really appreciate this opportunity, even just to be interviewed for the position. I do feel like I could bring a lot to the table, and I'm great comedic relief, like, not to brag or anything, so something to consider as well. And I do have to mention for Susan, for, she forgot real quick, but her sons were actually graduated from the school as well, so there is that connection. So I wanted to put in that plug for her as well. So, yeah, I just, it'd be really awesome to work without you all, and I know whoever you pick is gonna be the right choice, so, thank you.
All right, very good. All right, so we've gone through the first step here, and we can welcome our two other applicants in.
Did she really tell you that my two sons graduated high school and Josh's name is up on the... Okay, that was very kind.
All right, so the three applicants, three of the four applicants have made their initial presentations here, and technically, though, we do have four applicants that have applied for this position. So in consideration of our four applicants, we have an option in front of us here, and I will ask the board if we want to initially just try to make a vote for a candidate applicant to fill the position. And if we go to just a straight vote at this point here, we would have to come with majority of the board, which would be three votes, right? And so we have that option, we can go straight to a vote, or we can then go to option B, which is narrowing the field down to two applicants. And so we have an option of going straight to a vote now, or we can continue the process and narrow the field down to two, and at that point, we would ask further questions. So is someone prepared to make a motion to choose a direction of which way we would like to go?
I'd like to make a motion to go down to two candidates and ask further questions.
Okay.
Sorry, I realize that makes things longer, but I feel it's needed.
I would second that.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the table here to narrow the field down to two applicants. Motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Any other further questions or comments? All right, I'll call that motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes 4-0. So to narrow the field to two applicants, what we will do is, we will start off with a primary ballot, we're gonna call that, just like we do in a normal election, and we will ask each board member to write their two top choices for filling the vacancy. We can't, we cannot enter an applicant's name twice, there must be two different names on the ballot. And then we will collect the ballots. These are not secret, we have to, as a board member, put our name on the ballot, and so everyone knows who we are voting for. That's just part of how state law covers this procedure. And so, at this point, I'm gonna ask each of our current board members here to put on two names onto the primary ballot here. And then we'll ask the clerk to tally the votes, and the applicants with the two highest vote totals will then go on for final consideration. If we have a tie for the highest vote total, those two will both go on for final consideration. If there is one applicant with the highest vote total, and then there's a tie for the second choice, the one applicant with the highest vote total will go on, and there will be another vote between the two applicants that tied for the second place. There we go. So you guys are probably all the way ahead of me here, so.
While we're waiting, I just wanna say thank you to the three of you for coming tonight and putting in your application. Hopefully, if you don't, if you don't get seated tonight, hopefully you are more than willing to run in the next election.
You've been there.
Been there.
That's how you got here, huh?
Yeah.
And Stacy?
So I'm feeling your, feeling, sweating. It's bringing me back. I really am, it's such a situation going on here.
Yeah, it's, you know, it puts, you know, both the applicant and the board on the spots, and, you know, it's, it's, I don't know that there's an easy procedure to go through.
There's no better overview than...
Yeah, you've been on both sides of Stacy as well, so. So at this point here, we are looking to narrow the field down to two, and you can read off each member's vote, and give us a vote total if you would, please, Stacy.
Stacy Klein, Susan McCloskey, Alicia Williams, Josh Crawl, Susan McCloskey, Alicia Williams, Mike Witerski, Susan McCloskey, Alicia Williams, Michelle Muttline, Susan McCloskey, Alicia Williams, four for Susan McCloskey, four for Alicia Williams, and zero for Brian, and zero for Mariah.
I'd be doing a disservice to Mrs. Roderbush if I did not mention the Eyes of March today. Now I'm done. Thank you.
Mariah, thank you for putting your foot forward. We definitely encourage you to continue in your endeavors. We're proud to have you back as a former Three Lakes student. It's always wonderful to see someone come back and wanna give back to their school.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you.
All right, and we will continue now. Okay, so now we will be moving on to choosing from the field of two applicants, Susan and Alicia, and we will be asking more questions at this point. And we will ask, we'll just keep the same order, how's that, that we did the first go around, does that make sense?
Nothing like being first.
And... All right, so Stacy, if you would pick out question number one of two.
Okay.
And you'll have up to two minutes to respond to the question, Susan.
Okay.
What steps would you, as a board member, take to be an advocate for improving educational opportunities for our students?
Well, I know I probably sound like a broken record mentioning my dad for every answer, but in this case, it's really true. When you were talking about going down to see the legislators and things like that, I know he did some of that through the WASB, and who knows, maybe that's in my future too. But I totally agree with Terry that it's very important to be there, and I know one of the things that was near and dear to my dad's heart was to make sure that Three Lakes got funding, got, you know, because they're not big, like, down in Milwaukee. And so his big thing was the per pupil calculation for the budget, and so, you know, things, things like that. I would definitely wanna push for funding, for increasing our student enrollment. I'd like to use my business skills to, you know, market us, market our school, market all the, Fab Lab was like the first one in the state. So that's what I would do.
All right, very good, and we'll have another question pulled.
What is your current involvement with the Three Lakes School District?
Well, I am, I went to see Sanine to do two things, to get on the substitute teacher role, and I did do a bit of that. I haven't really been called, but I did get the opportunity to teach a couple times here, and just absolutely loved the students. They called me, I told them, I was trying to get to know them, so they each had to write down three things to tell them about myself. So then I did the same, and I told them that I was a former federal agent, so I was eating it up, 'cause the kids just loved that, and they passed me in the hall, "Hey, Agent Mac", you know, short from McCloskey, so man, I was in with those kids. And so hopefully, you know, that they would listen to me when I came again and again. And then when I did come back again, I brought the sheets, I had saved the sheets from each of my classes, and, 'cause I told them, "Then, next time, you're gonna have to add another thing about yourself," you know, so it was a way to get to know them. But I haven't done it recently, because, of course, I've been caring for my dad. But, but yeah, so I think I'm still active, I don't know, am I still on the rolls as a substitute teacher? There you go.
All right, very good, Susan. Thank you for your answers to those two questions, and we will ask you to trade places with Alicia.
I only get two? No. I'm all good. And by the way, to go...
And by the way, if you guys end up not voting for me and voting for her, I think she's amazing.
Very good. Got the same seat, huh, Alicia? All right, so we have popped two questions out of our little basket there. And we will give you up to two minutes to answer each question. And the first question is.
What steps would you, as a board member, take to be an advocate for improving educational opportunities for our students?
I think the first step is knowing and understanding our role and how that is governed in statute and policy. I think that's the first step to gaining understanding on what I can actually do to improve. As far as improving is concerned, I, I think I have a lot of knowledge coming from working in a school district every day right now, seeing some of the, the opportunities and things in other districts that work and may or may not work. I think I really support mentorship-type programs and bringing businesses and members of the community into our school districts, like community partnerships, because they have a buy-in and, and interest in what our future is in our students. So I really think that one of the things that I find most important is mentorship and human connection at every level, and developing relationships, not only with staff or to promote a kind of a, a positive culture and supportive nature in the school district, but also with, with students and the projects that come before the board.
Okay, and our second question, Stacy.
What is your current involvement with the Three Lakes School District?
Right now, I'm a member of Sugar Camp. Just my two students that are involved in the Three Lakes School District. As far as presence, it's been mainly focused on their extracurricular activities and involvement after school here with them, in sporting activities. And in the past, I have done a few things with the S E O at Sugar Camp. Every year, we do the, the trunk or treat and, and things whenever I can. Not enough.
She sings on me nationally.
Thank you, Mr. Volk.
She's on the board, can we make her sing every game?
All right, very good. Okay, well, thank you for your answers, Alicia. And we will now go on to the next round of voting, so you can, you can stay.
Stay in there?
You can stay right here.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so the board will be voting here shortly after hearing the answers to two additional questions. And I guess prior to us voting, board members, any other questions or discussions that you would like to share about the applicants? Ready to move on?
I have a question. Are we allowed to ask you a question?
As far as.
No, I was, the procedure, I was just curious. So you guys are going to vote either to your eye or going to win. Then do we get to stay for the rest of the meeting?
Absolutely.
That was my only question.
Yep. Stay, stay, stay behind Stacy. So the, the big answer to your question is, is who we do choose to fill that position. There is another step that takes place, and that's the oath of office. And that will take place after this meeting. So whoever we do choose will not sit as a board member for the rest of the meeting.
Okay.
That will take place at the next regular meeting. And.
April.
And the person that we do not choose, absolutely, definitely free to stay with the, the rest of us and hang out for the rest of the, the, the meeting. And so, I guess that, I would assume answers your question on that.
It does, I thought I was going to get to sit up there.
Perfect. All right, so since there are no other further discussions or questions from our board members, we will fill out a regular ballot here. Here, we will choose one of the applicants. And again, this is not a secret vote. You will hear who we vote for, and we will ask our clerk then to tally the votes. Okay, has everybody submitted their ballots? And we'll give you a moment here to tally up the votes there, Stacy.
I'm ready to read them.
Read through it.
Read each one.
Read through each one. Do you want, hold on. Do you want to read through procedure in case of a tie?
It has to be majority three, right?
It's got to have three votes. And if we do not have a, an applicant receiving three votes, we will continue this voting process and as, during, asking additional questions until we find a consensus of at least three votes. So, and this process can be repeated up to five times. And if there is no winning applicant, unless the majority of the board votes to, A, continue the voting process, or B, reinclude a previous excluded individual, the matter of appointment to fill the vacancy shall be deemed postponed. So that's the outline of the procedure. So, with that.
Sorry Stacy, doesn't mean a stretch back there.
Little drama there, huh?
All right, thanks for putting my name first, by the way. Stacy Klein, Susan McCloskey, Josh Crawl, Alicia Williams, Mike Witerski, Alicia Williams, Michelle Muttline, Susan McCloskey, for a tie of two to two.
There you go. Okay.
And I can't, I don't have a poker face. I can't even do this. I am not good at this.
All right, so there is a reason why we have a bunch of questions in the basket. In case this would continue, and that, that's always good, that we need to continue and learn a little bit more about the candidates. So we're going to reverse the order. How's that? And so Alicia, we're going to ask you to state the first question.
I think it's a hole.
Look at that.
It's a hole, everybody, it's a hole.
It's a hole.
That doesn't make it any better.
It's a night to remember.
He's been there that long.
Yes, it was in my office.
Okay, so we will continue with the process here. We will ask one more question and give you two minutes to respond, and then we'll switch again like we did in the past, and then we'll come to another vote, just like we previously done. So Stacy, pull out that magic question here.
If you could change two things in the Three Lakes School District, what would they be?
That's a really challenging one. Can I answer for my matter? I think transparency is one thing I would change as a parent. Knowing some of the things that are going on outside of school board agenda minutes, those kind of things. We kind of get the, as parents, in the Robin Report and the Three Lakes Newsletter, we get the Sunshine and Puppies version of what happens in the school. But in, in my world, I like to know a little bit more about reality and some of the challenges that our staff are facing. So I think that would be one good thing for parents to know and understand that level of communication on, on things that are problems. And, and what we can do as a community, or more specifically, as parents, what can we do to improve the culture here? Second thing. I honestly, I don't have a second thing. I, as a parent, I've been extremely happy with being in this district. And, you know, I, I love the family-type feel that my kids see at every level, from academics to, to coaching, and the genuine care for, for students that I see or have been witness to is, is great. It's why we have a heart in this district. Maybe once I knew more of all the inner workings, I could answer a second. Hopefully.
All right, very good. I appreciate your answer on that.
Two questions or one?
What's that?
We're doing two questions or one?
I had one, but.
Oh, no, that's fine. I, I missed it.
Yep. I'm cheating.
Oh, sorry. I was having a moment with my competitor.
Boy, with the, with the two of you in your training, that might be a bad thing.
That is true. Actually, I was telling her that I was going to come in here and tell you guys that I want a withdrawal, so that she can have it. That's what I was just telling her. That my dad's shoes are big to fill and, but I didn't know anybody else was going to run, and I think she'd be great, and so.
Okay, so you are.
And then we don't have to stay here for five minutes. Well, I don't know. You know what she just said to me? You should keep going. What would your dad want? What would my dad want, Terry? You know him.
He'd probably say, "There's a procedure in place that's been."
I mean, honestly, I think she would be fabulous. I think a new, young voice would be fabulous. This is, I. You know, I. Somebody help me here. What? Let's take a Democrat vote. Should I do two more questions?
You, you, you retain the right to.
All right, fine, let's do this.
It's only one question.
It's only one.
It's only one. Thank God.
It's a tough one, though.
All right.
Okay, so you will be answering the question, all right? Okay, very good. And that question is, Stacy.
If you could change two things in the Three Lakes School District, what would they be?
Wow. If I could change two things. Oh, well, the first one's pretty easy. I'll have to think about the second one. Diversity. There's not a whole lot of diversity up here, and people of different languages, you know, and, and that's hard for kids to not be introduced to all of that. And I come from South Florida, which is like a melting pot. You can't go anywhere without hearing five different languages spoken on any given day, so. But that's kind of, you know, that, that can't be fixed, that sort of thing, just because of what it is. But so, yeah, I'd like to see more diversity here. The second thing I would change, I, you know, listen, my boys turned out good because of this school and because of this community. And Jonathan was, my oldest, was not on a good trajectory. That's why I sent him up here to live with my parents. So in terms of what I would change, really, nothing. So I can't give you a second one. I, I, this school has done good by my family, my kids. And, you know, Jonathan then went to Marquette, same school as my dad, and became a Marine, served his country, if, you know, both graduated from here. So I wouldn't change a thing, other than that first thing, which can't be changed.
Very good.
I can go.
Thank you for your answer. And you can come back and we're going to go to a next vote here.
Oh.
So. We can ask Alicia to come back. All right, so we will have another vote.
Susan, sit down and answer the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've not used too many words.
So Alicia and Susan, we are in the process of doing another round of voting as we speak here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is round two of potentially five, unless we vote to change process. But at this point here, again, we still need three votes.
Okay. Stacy Klein, Alicia Williams, Josh Crawl, Alicia Williams, Mike Witerski, Alicia Williams, Michelle Muttline, Alicia Williams, for a total of four votes.
So we do have a majority vote. And congratulations, Alicia and Susan. And then at our next board meeting, you will sit in the full capacity of a board member. And again, following the track that I had outlined initially in terms of the length of the term, et cetera. So if you have any further questions, we can definitely review that with you when you come back and put you in the office. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
We have to notify her within eight days and then if she doesn't refuse within five days after that notification, she is on and then she can do the whole. But if she's not going to refuse, she can do it whenever I have it ready.
Because there's lots of numbers that we have to, within the law, it would really be appreciated if you could do it within eight days. It saves us from step two and three.
All right. Okay.
Alicia, if you want, I can email you the oath and you can go to any bank or any authority and do it in front of them. That's easier.
Perfect. Can I ask Rob enough? Just if she remembers.
All right, okay, here we go. I knew we'd make it interesting, right? Okay, so next, we go to the April meeting date. Our regular meeting day is the 19th of April at 6:00 PM at Three Lakes and no change, just announcement, right?
No change. April 19, 6 o'clock here in the boardroom.
There we go. So unless there's a special, Alicia, that could be your first meeting then.
All right.
All right, so next, we go to consider approval of the personnel report of new hires and resignations.
Okay. I received a resignation after the end of the date today. That is not in your board packet, so I'm going to include that as well. Resignations, Ellie Soder from Junior High Volleyball Basket Coach, yeah volleyball, volleyball coach, sorry about that. And Shannon Lacks has submitted her resignation, retirement for the end of the school year, but her contract is done. Hiring's, Kelly Griesbach, girls' soccer coach, Cole Griesbach, assistant girls' soccer coach, Brad Bisnet, head baseball coach, Charles Volk, track head coach, Jessica Weaver's, assistant track coach, Lori Mannion, assistant track coach, Mitch Ellis, assistant track coach, Carrie Volk, a program, track program assistant, Cassandra Spratt, junior high track coach, Nate Coach, junior high assistant track coach, Todd Ria, junior high golf coach, and Brandon Sharp, assistant baseball coach, who will be contracted through Phelps.
All right. Thank you for that report. Someone prepare to make a motion to approve that report.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented and the addition of the one Terry presented. Is that good?
All right, motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. Any other questions?
In regards to the assistant baseball coach contracted through Phelps, I mean, I don't know, have we had this before? I'm just curious on how, I guess, the policy works or agreement.
We have. And Charlie, did you want to share anything?
So basically, we've done this before with Phelps. When we have a staff member up there, they use our salary schedule to pay their coach. Just because it's beneficial for them to be paid through the Phelps district rather than us, that cost will be totally absorbed by the Phelps School District and not be part of it as for us this year.
Okay.
And it hasn't happened, Josh, I would say, in four years, but before that, we did have Phelps coach most of the time on staff here.
Okay. So it's just kind of an as-available kind of thing and they apply like others?
Yes, it just happened. Somebody that was interested.
Okay. Sure, thanks. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the report to a vote. All those in favor of the personnel report signify by standing aye.
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 Aye, opposed, unheard, motion passes 4-0. All right, next, consider a possible CDL course in collaboration with Carl's Transport. Ryan and Tim.
They say that third time's a charm.
Third time's a charm, yeah. And before Ryan goes on, I want to apologize to the board. I was supposed to be here in January and I was called away out of emergency. I was supposed to be here last month and the sickness got a hold of me. So like Ryan said, third time's a charm, so I appreciate it. My apologies.
Great. Well, we had our preliminary conversation back in January and while you heard Mr. Perdola just explain again, we talked a little bit about the wonderful field trip that 40-plus tech head students had the opportunity to go to Carl's Transport. We talked about that in detail, so I won't spend time going through all that again. But in the amount of time that we've known each other, really started that relationship and again, had a wonderful time over there and the buzz that the student was brought back to the building after that experience is definitely not, was not just a one-day experience.
No, definitely. That's great. And we had him driving a semi also, too.
Yeah, always did. Every student had a chance to drive, including myself, and resulted in a 15-year gap between driving the stick shift back in 1943. So today, we're going to go into more detail. We do have the presentation, which was included in the board docs, along with the Safe Drive Apprentices Program, some information in regards to that, too.
Great, and that's what I want to, and the slide deck that you have is long and I'm not going to go through that. You have a long agenda tonight. I'm going to hit on the highlights of this whole program, so I'll let you bring that up and then we're going to go forward from there. And if you don't mind, I'm going to stand.
All right, and I'm going to get it up on the...
So, you know, up until this year, there's no way I would have came into a high school and talked about this program. We are Carl's Transport, and those of you who don't know who we are, we're based in Anago, Wisconsin. But before I go there, I am a 1982 graduate of Three Lakes High.
Terry?
Yeah, Terry, brother. So very proud of that and I'm very proud to be back here to be offering this. But like I was saying, up until this year, we weren't able to do this simply because the way the federal rule is written, you have to be 21 to hold a CDL to drive interstate, meaning across state lines. The definition of interstate is a little bit foggy because we all think of that as not crossing, or crossing state lines, an intrastate, staying within the state of Wisconsin. That is true, but it's true not just for the driver, but it's true for the freight. We have 18-year-olds, or excuse me, we have freight that goes from Anago to Tomahawk to Rylander to Merrill. And if that freight is destined for another state, an 18-year-old can't haul that. So if we're going from Rylander to Anago, we have a big warehouse in Anago, and that freight is destined to go to another state, an 18-year-old cannot haul that. So that really limits to what an 18-year-old can do. However, an 18-year-old in the state of Wisconsin can haul beer because it doesn't leave the state of Wisconsin. Especially, go figure. Okay. So, we became part of what's called the Safe Driver Apprentices Program. It's through the Biden Infrastructure Bill, bipartisan bill that came through not that long ago. And we became a Department of Labor Apprentices Program first and with that, we were able to apply for the Safe Driver Apprentices Program. And what that allows us to do is hire and train 18, 19, and 20-year-olds to drive interstate, meaning across state lines and haul freight that crosses state lines. Currently, we have the only 19-year-old in the entire country driving interstate. We're one of 15 carriers in the country that have been approved for this program. I had, if you guys saw the paper about a year ago, I had the pleasure of going to the White House and meeting the President of the United States during his speech on the infrastructure bill. What Terry said earlier about meeting with legislators, I'm on three different legislative committees with three different associations, there's nothing more important than that face-to-face visit, which I'm sure you guys saw. You can document, you can email, you can do everything you want, but to actually have this face-to-face, that is what got us into this. Our safety record, our work culture, and whatnot. So, I loved it. When I contacted Ryan and Ryan said, "Yeah, we want to come to Cedar School and we want to talk and we want to hear more about this," that's why I'm here. So, if we could advance a little bit, Ryan, we're going to go through it. And like I said, I'm not going to go through all this. I want to touch base on some of the career opportunities in transportation and then talk about the apprenticeship program just a little bit and what some of the other area of schools are going for. So, all right, so some common driver myths. You have to be 21. Well, I just told you, you don't have to be 21 to do this anymore. Long hours, most of our drivers are working, yeah, they're working 70 hours a week, okay, but they're being compensated for every one of those hours. Trucks are uncomfortable. Ryan, are the trucks uncomfortable?
Absolutely not.
We had a 2023 Freightliner in the bay that all the students got to see and these things are incredible. I mean, for $225,000, they should be. It's basically a motorhome for these folks. All the amenities, fridges, microwaves, TVs, the whole nine yards, that's their home. Force dispatch, what that means is we don't force our drivers to go somewhere where they don't want to go and we're not going to wake them up when their required break is over. There's a lot of companies out there right now, what they do is when they take their mandatory 10-hour break, they wake up the drivers and say, "It's time to go." We don't do that. Away from home for months, absolutely not. We're five days out, two days home, and this goes for all of our drivers. Here's the kicker, earn low pay. Our first-year drivers, and this includes 18-year-olds, have the potential to make $65,000 their first year. Okay? Two- and four-year degrees, and I'm not knocking two- and four-year degrees. We all know, especially those of us that have been around, it's not for everybody, is it? Okay? The school knows that, the board knows that, Terry, you know that, everybody knows that. So where can you go to go through six weeks of schooling, seven weeks of formal training, and make $65,000 a year? Only for men. I've trained 14 women in our CDL class now. We have been voted one of the top carriers in the country for women to drive for. Our, right now, we have about 19% women in our company. The national average is nine, so we're about 10% higher than what the national average is. Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah.
All right, we talked about the realities of the Safe Driver Apprentices Program. The CDL is based on a federal requirement of entry-level driver training. That rule came out three years ago where it now requires anybody that wants a CDL to go through formal training. It used to be you could go in, take a few tests at the DMV, wait two days, go drive Uncle Bob's truck, test, and be out there driving an 80,000-pound rig at 70 miles an hour. I have a family, we all have families, is that what we want out on the road right now? No, we don't. We want the formal training. We talked about the benefits, well, the benefits, full benefit package, first-year drivers can make $50,000 plus, and we talked about the 19% of the Carl's Driving Force will be in with it. Go ahead, Ryan. We have our own CDL school. Ryan got a chance to see the whole thing, including the simulators. We have two state-of-the-art simulators. That's a picture of one down at the bottom. We start every single driver on that simulator. We've taken our training level to a whole, a whole different level, simply with these machines. That simulator is about the price of a new semi truck. So we spent roughly, between the two of them, about a quarter million dollars on the two sims, and it makes an incredible difference on our training. We've taken the training to a level of teaching the whys behind the hows. Why do I have to shift it this way? Why do I have to keep looking in my mirrors? Why do I have to do this? Why do I have to do that? We tell them that. We tell them the why behind the how. We teach them to be a professional driver, not just to pass a test. There's too many schools out there that are teaching these students just to pass a test. Okay? Go ahead, Ryan. Real quick, modern amenities, our apprentice drivers, our 18-year-olds have to have adaptive cruise control, collision mitigation, automatic braking, automatic transmission, lane departure warnings, inward and outward-facing dash cams. So it's basically, the truck can drive the driver, but we're continuing to teach the driver to drive the truck. Okay, there's a big difference. GPS, smartphone apps, there's a lot of technology involved. With the trucks that our apprentices are driving right now, there's 13 onboard computers. So who better than to drive a vehicle with 13 computers than an 18-year-old right now?
And I misspoke with Squidly when he asked about the comfortability. It was not what I expected. And when the students were talking about all the gadgets and when they opened up the front hood, the engine, how clean it was, blew their mind.
It does. The technology of these things are unbelievable. It still has people on the way at times. So, go ahead. Some of the nine-driving careers. So this is what I tell our 18-year-olds that we have come through the school. I started this a little bit later in life. Now, I've been doing it for about 30 years. I started as a driver. I worked into our safety department, driver management supervisor, and then eventually started the CDL school. But I'll have a student come in and say, "Well, I want to be a diesel mechanic." Great. Do you think being a diesel mechanic would require a CDL? Well, no, hike and test drive. Customer service, fleet management, recruiting, payroll, anything with a truck-driving company or their own company, if you had that CDL in hand, it's gold. It's gold, the experience. Bring in an 18-year-old on, working in this industry as a driver for five or 10 years, they're only 28-years-old. They could own their own company, they could start their own company, they could start their own mechanical company, they could start their own trucking company, delivery company. There's so many opportunities that these young folks have never had before. And that's what we're here for. That's what we want to try to do, is give these kids these, or these young adults, I should say, this opportunity. So, the Safe Driver Apprentices Program, that is why I'm here. Right now, we're partnering, and it's not because I chose Three Lakes last, it's because of the way Crandon actually came to us and said, "What can we do for truck driving? We've got so much interest in truck driving, what can we do?" So right now, we're working with Crandon. They have four students that are going to be starting in May, all 18-year-olds, two of which are going to go through our Safe Driver Apprentices Program, which means they have to stay with us until they're 21. The other two are going to become, one's going to drive for their logging, their parents own a logging company, and the other one, actually, their folks run Argon Lumber, so they're going to be delivery drivers with Argon Lumber. They are paying for their entire tuition. That's something I'm not exactly sure how they're doing. They're taking care of their learner's permit, they're taking care of their federal medical certificate, and they have also requested WEOWA grants for these four students. It looks like they're probably going to be able to go that way. They're also very interested in starting a CDL program within the school. Now, what that would entail is just the theory portion. It's not the driving portion. It would be an instructor in there, there's required theory, there's 35 chapters that we have to teach these students. So they would begin the theory portion within the school, second semester of their senior year, and then transfer to our facility for the hands-on. That's the direction we like to see, but not required. We want to get these kids involved and get the kids knowing, even at the junior level, of what the opportunity is when they turn 18. Right now, we're pushing for legislation to allow them to get their learner's permits at 17 and 1/2, right? And that's something new since we've last talked, and right now, it looks like it's going to happen. So what that does is allows them to actually go in and get their learner's permit first, which is required before the CDL school, at 17 and 1/2. We can get them into the program, enrolled in the program, start teaching them in the program, and at 18, boom, they're hitting the road right away, instead of waiting until they're 18 to go through that entire process. So we're actually saving six months by getting this done early. Safe Driver Apprentices Program, we vet these students. So at 18, they've only been driving for two years, but we all know that some of them don't have exactly a stellar... certificate, and they have also requested WEOWA grants for these four students. It looks like they're probably going to be able to go that way. They're also very interested in starting a CDL program within the school. Now, what that would entail is just the theory portion. It's not the driving portion. It would be an instructor in there, taught, and there's required theory, there's thirty-five chapters that we have to teach these students. So, they would begin the theory portion within the school, second semester of their senior year, and then transfer to our facility for the hands-on. That's the direction we like to see, but not required. We want to get these kids involved and get the kids know, knowing, even in the junior, at the junior level, of what the opportunity is when they turn eighteen. Right now, we're pushing for legislation to allow them to get their learner's permits at seventeen and a half, right? And that's something new since we've last talked, and right now, it looks like it's going to happen. So, what that does is allows them to actually go in and get their learner's permit first, which is required before the CDL school, at seventeen and a half. We can get them into the program, enrolled in the program, start teaching them in the program, and at eighteen, boom, they're hitting the road right away, instead of waiting until they're eighteen to go through that entire process. So, we're actually saving six months by getting this done early. Safe Driver Apprenticeship Program, we vet these students. So, at eighteen, they've only been driving for two years, but we, we all know that some of them don't have exactly a stellar driving record. I get in the car and I want to go fast, okay? So, we pull driving records, we pull criminal background, they, it's zero tolerance for alcohol, and that's the way it is for eighteen-year-olds anyway, sixteen to twenty-one, it's zero, zero tolerance. Speeding tickets, reckless driving, anything like that will automatically disqualify them from this program. So, the question is, can an eighteen-year-old drive an eighteen-wheeler? Well, when Three Lakes came, we had, I think, a freshman drive an eighteen-wheeler, which I didn't realize.
On a training course.
On the training course, not on the road, yes.
My daughter did.
So, when somebody tells me that an eighteen-year-old is too young, I look at them and say, well, and here it's, and oh, this is an old story. Who's going to war for us? Eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds, right? Okay? So, I'm an employer, I have a twenty-one-year-old that just came out of a four- or five-week CDL program, and I also have a twenty-one-year-old who just went through a three-year apprenticeship program. Who am I going to hire? I'm going to hire that person that went through that apprenticeship program. During apprenticeship program, they're required to go through two different probationary periods. One's a hundred and twenty hours with a trainer, the other one is two hundred and forty hours with a trainer. That trainer has to sign off on them through a variety of different areas that they're trained, and if they don't make it, that probationary period gets extended. Once they're done with that training, then they are monitored monthly. We have to report to the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration monthly. Any kind of an incident, whether it's a speeding ticket, an inspection through, through a DOT inspector, all has to be reported. Their logs that they keep all have to be transmitted to the federal government, so they know that we're not trying to push them through real quick. That all has to happen until they're twenty-one. So, our constant, we're constantly reporting on these young guys. Right now, we just have Zach out there, we have two more that'll be starting in May, and we're so excited to see this and give these young folks an opportunity in this industry. Like I said, I've been in this industry for thirty years. Just a real quick story, when I graduated Three Lakes, I wasn't sure I knew what I wanted to do. So, I went over to Nicolay and I took a career assessment test. You know what the three things were, the top three things? A mechanic, I used to work on boats. A truck driver, I was a truck driver. Third one, a teacher. And what do I do now? I'm the administrator of our CDL school and proud of it. I can, I just love every minute of my job, every second of my job. And I, I can't, when, when, Three Lakes brought the biggest group. Ryan says, what, I think I got like, what, forty-five? It's like, what? You know, Eagle River brought three. I think some of the other schools brought Tomahawk. Tomahawk, one guy. Okay? One guy. So, now, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to do presentations like this, I'm trying to get out into the schools. I just did a career fair at Wausau West, I got in touch with the guidance counselors, the guidance counselors have reached out to me, they now want private meetings with some of their seventeen and eighteen-year-olds to get them on board. Crandon, Anago, Three Lakes, Northland Pines hasn't shown a whole lot of interest, but here again, I was supposed to be back here two months ago, and I, I apologize, but, and of course, I got to pick the name when you're all the way to what letter R.
Last one was S.
So, so that pretty much takes care of what the apprenticeship program is about. We want to encourage schools to, to really not, and here again, I went to a youth apprenticeship program in Merrill, and those students that are in youth apprenticeship pretty much already have their career ideas in mind, but when I started talking to some of the ones that wanted to get into the logistics and diesel mechanics, and I talked to them about having that CDL in hand, their eyes lit up. And I've got a lot of interest from Merrill, in fact, I'll be back there in two weeks to talk to these students again. So, whatever interest we can generate, here again, it gives them an opportunity to explore something that's never been offered to them before. And I live in Three Lakes, I'm two minutes away from here. For me to bring a truck or to come and visit, I'd be more than happy to. Again, I want to thank everybody on the board and apologize again for my delay in being here. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, there is more to the slide deck than what I have. And basically what it is, folks, it's the qualifications for the, for the apprenticeship program. It goes into more detail on what's involved in selecting our kids, our guys, our girls, and what's required of them. So, I really appreciate the time. Any questions?
So, Tim, you can't even teach theory with, if they're not eighteen?
No, no, unfortunately, I can't because it requires the learner's permit.
Sure.
To get enrolled into the school, that's a great question. To get into the school, they have to have the learner's permit. So, we pushed, Representative Spiros actually works for rail transport over in Marchville. He's a huge advocate of this whole program. So, he's pushing, along with Senator Falskowski, to get this legislation passed, to get this permit down to seventeen and a half. It doesn't mean that they're going to be, they cannot be licensed at seventeen and a half.
Right.
We can get them enrolled in the, in the apprenticeship program, and we can get them at eighteen, by that time, they're ready to go. So, I would love to be able to teach the theory portion, start in junior year if I could, or even beginning a senior year, but right now, until something changes with the permit, it would have to be once they get the permit. So, if we go seventeen and a half, that's six months, that's six months earlier. I think we can attract more people that way. And that's the whole goal behind this program. I belong to an organization called Next Gen Trucking, which is primarily dealing with high schools. They've had the, in fact, they, they were supporters of the first high school in the country, Patterson High School in California, to actually offer a full CDL class. California laws are different, well, California's different, period, but we won't go there. They've got a lot of different things over there, they are starting drivers a lot younger over there, for some reason, they're allowed to do. Here again, they can't get the CDL till they're eighteen, that's federal. That is federal, but they can start training them a lot earlier. So, that's what we're pushing for. And as heavily as I'm involved with the legislature, and both on the federal and the, and the state side, I think we can get this passed. I really do.
For seniors who turn eighteen, maybe during the first semester, would they have to go to Carls Transport during that second semester if they wanted to start the theory portion? Or is there an online option?
Yes, yes, that's a good question. So, we do have, we do offer an online version. Now, to answer, to directly, if they, let me, let me back up a minute. If they want to become an apprentice and work for us and drive interstate, in-person theory is required. That is our policy. Okay? We want them there so we can talk to them and get to know them more than just throwing them in a truck. We don't believe in that. If it's an eighteen-year-old that's, say, going to drive for a logging company or mom and dad or whatnot, we can offer them that online. We've got two eighteen-year-olds out of Eagle River that are going to be starting in my March class, and they're doing the online because they're going to be working for their parents' company. So, that's their option. If they're going to come to work for us, they would have to be in-person. So, that's why we want to try, and now whether the in-person is with me, or whether we establish an in-person theory class within the high school, it's one and the same, it's still in-person. Great question, very good question. Anything else from anybody?
Do we have students that want to do this?
We have students that had a great interest after the, the field trip experience because of the unknown of exactly what the program looks like and what we can offer them. It's kind of up in the air right now. And one of our challenges going through the, the registration process, but because of the eighteen-year-old limit, that's our senior, you're looking at a small population that's , you've got to turn eighteen, so the students who are interested in potentially going through the CDL program and they're eighteen is, is a smaller group.
I still think, what, and we're going to do what we did this year with the high schools, is we're going to have a high school-only career fair, just like we did, and we're going to invite all the schools back again sometime, probably late, late this year, and see what the interest is, see if there's more, you know, or less, and then kind of judge it from there. But I'm really keeping my fingers crossed that we can get this permit down to seventeen and a half, because that's going to make a big difference as far as getting these folks in. It really is. All right.
Great.
Thanks again, everybody, I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you, Tim.
You bet, you're very welcome.
So, Ryan, what exactly are we looking to approve here as far as this?
So, in my opinion, it, it was a little bit late, we are doing course registration right now with our, with our juniors, but if we had a course description based on what the logistics are, the, you know, legally, where it's at, where it's at now, and if it changes in the future, that, that information could go out. Is this, could we start the theory, or could we potentially offer that? That would be something that Mr. Perdula and I would talk about. What would that look like if we had students interested in pursuing a CDL license upon turning eighteen, is what, is what the, the language would state at this point for next So, I don't know as far as like the financial cost of that.
So, we work really closely with the Department of Workforce Development, and we owe grants. And when I have an eighteen-year-old go through an agent and say that I want to become a, go through CDL training, it's about a ninety-nine percent success rate and then get them full financing to go through. Now, now, if they come through our apprenticeship program, zero cost, we take, we foot the bill on this. So, if they want to come through the apprenticeship program, go through all three years, stay with us for that time, we're going to pay their tuition, we're going to pay for their licensing, we're going to pay for the apprenticeship program, and we're going to pay them from day one, the day they walk into that classroom, they're going to start getting paid. Okay? There is a contract involved, okay? It's a mileage-based contract, it's two hundred and forty thousand miles. That's only two years of driving. So, there's, if they want to stay in this apprenticeship program and keep driving interstate until they're twenty-one, the contract is only two years, but they have to stay with us for three to keep, to stay in that program. So, here again, we could probably, and we're, we're actually looking at pulling away from the contract part, we have a lot of schools that have decided to do that through the apprenticeship program. It attracts people a little bit more, because here again, if they decide to leave us, they go right back to interstate, meaning they're going to be going back to hauling Pepsi products and chips and beer, and that's pretty much it. There's not a whole lot that an eighteen-year-old can do within the state of Wisconsin. You know, folks ask me about FedEx, the folks ask me about, you know, some of the other carriers, that freight, if it's destined, if it comes from another state into Wisconsin, they can't haul it. So, even though it's being delivered in Wisconsin, it wasn't manufactured here, it came from another state, that's still interstate commerce, so they wouldn't be able to haul it. That's where the rule is. And now, folks have asked me, well, why don't they just change the rule? Then you're looking at maritime, rail, trucking, and airlines. If you change that interstate rule, now you've got, you've got eighteen-year-olds, now if there's anything against an eighteen-year-old flying a seven forty-seven, okay, or piloting a four-hundred-and-fifty-foot ship, okay, but it would change, it would, it would be not good. It's just not, not right now, not until, you know, it just wouldn't be good. So, I'm sorry, let me interrupt.
So, at this point, I think Mr. Perdula and I can work on getting all the information available to our students in the guidance office, and I can help promote the program, but at, at this point, we wouldn't offer it necessarily through the school, it would be in car station.
Through us, right.
Yep, through Carls Transport, and then we'll see how things evolve. If the modeling Crandon works really well, and, and, and that works out, or if the minimum age comes down to seventeen, and there's a large amount of interest. For, for example, some of the other programs that are around through Nicolay, if there's six students, they'll send somebody over to help run a program.
Nicolay has also showed interest in this program as far as doing the theory portion, so I am working with, I've, I've had meetings with Kate a couple times, and we're, we're looking at that for possibly next year's partnering with Nicolay and doing a program with them.
And so I can keep the board updated on anything that transpires in conversation with other school districts, Carls Transport, Nicolay, and then we'll see how this evolves as we move forward. But at this time, I will get all that information, make it available to our students, and continue to engage in awareness.
And I'll, I'll fill you in on, Crandon's very aggressive with this, I mean, extremely aggressive. They're, I'm on the phone with them quite a bit, so I can find out what language they're using as far as the program goes and how they're promoting it. I know they'll divulge that information, they want this to be in all the school students, isn't just a Crandon thing, you know, because they're not going to attract somebody from Three Lakes over to Crandon. Okay? I think we all. So, yeah, definitely, perfect, yeah. So, whatever you guys need, you know how to get ahold of me. Okay? Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm still fuzzy on what we're actually looking to approve here.
At this, nothing.
Nothing at this time.
So, at this point, I'm going to continue the conversation with the students within the guidance office. I will promote materials to increase the awareness and include information, and as the program evolves, I'll keep the board informed, and this is Superintendent Beatty as well, and we'll keep the conversation going as soon as when it's appropriate to go back to the board.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. All right, so at this point here, any idea when this information is, you'll be ready? Are we talking next year sometime?
So, I have the information that was presented, I can put that together, and I, I believe that most of our students are aware that it exists, especially the forty-five students that, that attended the field trip. So, I will continue to engage the students in, with the information, and then let them know that at this point, you know, Mr. Perdula will be our point of contact, if they want to pursue it, I can help, help make that communication happen, and we won't offer a specific program through the Three Lakes School District and Carls Transport, but I'll, I'll obviously give them information about CDL training.
Okay.
And the program that they offer.
All right, so basically, you're looking to just table this here until a future date?
It, it's just discussion, it's discussion.
So...
It's not a Three Lakes School District program, so there's nothing for the board to make a decision upon.
But it is asking the board to, to, we're considering a possible CDL course in collaboration with Carls Transport, so we are asking the board for action on that. So, at this point, we are just going to table that action.
Right, until we have further information as it develops.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
So, is someone prepared to take a motion that we just table this here to a future date?
I'll make a motion to table the CDL course collaboration with Carls Transport till later.
Second.
All right. Any other further questions? Hearing none, all those favor of the motion signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes four to zero.
Give the excuse for a quick recess.
I'm sorry?
Can you use a press room quick?
We could probably take a little break here, and we'll have a short recess here for about four, make it five minutes. And Terry, did you want to leave? How was it? You had a positive happening that you, and you really tried to tie those all together, but did you want to share that and then?
Oh, I won't leave quite yet, but I probably won't last the whole time. So, I appreciate that. I just wanted to personally thank the district for continual support of the Three Lakes Academic Banquet, which we just had another successful one, twenty-sixth, I believe, and just wanted to say thanks for all the support you've given me, us as a committee, because this is probably going to be my last, so I just wanted to thank you guys personally and in the public forum for that, so.
Great.
And if Ryan was going to expand on that, I didn't want to jump on him, so. He's got more of the technicals, he's got more of the technicals, but I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work you did on that, it was really an awesome banquet, so.
I think it's been about eight or nine years for me, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great thing for our students.
I'm ready to pass the torch.
All right, very good. So we'll just take a five-minute break here, and we'll be back at eight fifty-four, seven fifty-four.
I was going to say, holy cow, I could run home.
Yeah, I could. Drive there and drive home fast.
You want stays?
Great.
Yeah?
I'll hold my pajamas on every time.
Glad we got through that appointment. Hopefully everybody feels refreshed, ready for the second half here.
Third.
Third. We're going to.
We're going fast.
Did you hear that?
What?
You just said we're going to be real fast.
That's right. Take it to the bank, right? All right, so now we are on E. Consider girls' basketball co-op with Phelps School District for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five. Who's starting off?
I guess I will.
All right.
Mike, you've been on the board for a number of years, you've seen this here a few times. And I wouldn't be bringing it back if I didn't think it was something that was important.
Okay.
In the past, I haven't had the support of administration and coaches, and I've got that now. And this year, we had enough to fill a J V, but not that many. There were times where it was questionable whether we were going to be able to do the J V game for the evening, either with injuries or, you know, ineligibleities and things like that, but somehow we were able to kind of always work it out. With two people graduating and possibly maybe one wanting, one and a half coming into our program, our numbers are consistently struggling, and it's just not our school. Northland Pines and both Rylander, they have about the same amount of girls that we have in our, in our girls' basketball program. And I just, looking at two leaving, one and a half coming in, and then we have one sophomore. So we, basically, this year, we had two seniors, two juniors, one sophomore, and I believe twelve freshmen, is that right? I just want, I just want this to be something that we never have to go, like, not this last year, but the year before, where we didn't have a J V team. I really saw the detriment of that in some of the kids' progression and ability, and even some of them not coming back out because the following year, the year that they played as freshmen, they didn't get any minutes, it was a long season, they felt inadequate on the, on the varsity floor, and therefore they, they didn't go as a sophomore. So I guess I'm bringing this to the board. We have had a head parent meeting, Josh was there. In the past, we probably had more opposition to it. This, I would say at this meeting, there was very little, although there was some, but I think it was in the vast majority of, the majority of the people that were thinking about the program. So I guess I would like to see if we were going to co-op a, it's a two-year commitment, I have talked about the W, talked with the W I A, and if we were going to just, you know, can you break these co-ops? Yes, you can, but it has to go to Board of Control, and then it's in their hands, and sometimes, it always doesn't go your way. But the co-op, it would be only for two, two years, two seasons, starting next year. So I just see it as something that, I think it's important to the program, just to keep its sustainability, to keep us at a full varsity, full J V. Once you start that downward spiral that I see happening in some of our other conference schools that don't have J Vs, and it's not where we want to be. The combined enrollment of Phelps and Three Lakes would still keep us around thirty students less than the biggest Division Five school. And it wasn't even the biggest one that I found, I just looked at Edgar this year, Edgar has a hundred and ninety students, and they're Division Five. Our projected enrollment next year, looking at our incoming and outgoing, would be three less, so it would be at one thirty-nine, and looking at Phelps, it'd be at twenty-seven. So our projected enrollment would be right around thirty less than the, one of the biggest Division Five schools. And that's something that people were always concerned with as far as, you know, this is going to move us up a division as far as competitiveness in this co-op program.
And what kind of a buffer is there?
As far as.
Moving, like, what kind of buffer between going to the next division?
From where we're at, around thirty students. I mean, it's substantial. It's, it's substantial. I mean, if our enrollment, since I've been here, I think our enrollment's been, one forty-eight, I think, was always the biggest, and I think this year is one forty-two. So it's always been like one forty-eight, one forty-eight, then it was like one forty-six, one forty-five, and this year, our enrollment is one forty-two for the W I A. So we've been consistently under that one hundred and fifty mark. Phelps keeps shrinking. I think this year, they were twenty-eight, next year, they're looking at twenty-seven for projections.
Okay. And what was the feelings at the meeting that you had?
You know, the feelings were, one parent was, yes, definitely adamant about not wanting it. I think the rest were pretty open-minded. One of the biggest questions was, is it going to move us up a division? And the answer that I could probably safely say is, it's not, unless we really do some growing here. You know, they saw the importance of being able to have that J V component of your program so that those freshmen and sophomore kids, unless they have that really high skill set, that would give them the place to get minutes and improve, so that by the time you're typically ready as a junior and a senior, you're ready to go on the varsity floor. And generally, that's, you know, it's the way, you want your program to work, you want your, you know, your, your freshmen and your sophomores to gain those skills that your, your coaches want them to have, and then as juniors and seniors, they're, they're the meat and potatoes of your program, okay? There are very few programs that really rely heavily on freshmen and sophomore for varsity programs. And if you are, then you've got, you've got something special coming up, or you're, you're really hurt. So, you know, I thought, there wasn't a highly attended meeting, I think there were about twelve adults there. Josh was there for, for the bulk of it. I guess I see my role in this as, you know, I, my daughters are gone, my daughter played her last basketball game this year, and so I really don't have a bullet skin in the game anymore, other than I really care about Three Lakes, and I see this as something that I think is, is really important in order to keep our program where we want it. So I guess that's why, I've been, I've been for it for a while, because I see the importance and development of that. I got an email from, from Justin here saying he doesn't want to see our programs go J V list again, because he saw what happened last year, and it's, it's, it's not right, you know, it's not, it's not how you wanted to see your, your sophomores last year, not get as many minutes and be forced into that varsity role as a junior. And, you know, it's, I think it's important, so I guess, I know we've talked about it a lot, I know Phelps is talking about it tonight at their board meeting, because we're up against the deadline here of April first, and I thought it was important for me to have a parent meeting, because that's something that wasn't done when I was a parent, and it was brought to some of the board members here. I remember the sour, bad taste I had in my mouth, because I didn't think it was needed at that time, when we had full J V and a full varsity for softball. So I guess I bring this to you, because I think it's a win-win for all of us, and I think it's important to carry on that tradition of collegiate basketball here.
How are our ranks in junior high?
All right, so question numbers here, I've got that. So in our junior high this year, Mike, we have, that's high school, we have three eighth graders, okay? Of, of those eighth graders that I talked to, we have one girl that says, no, she's not going to play in high school. Why? You know, she said, I just don't like high school basketball, she's not there yet, but she doesn't like it. I've got one girl that's, hmm, maybe, and I got one girl that's like, yeah, I'm going to play next year. At our seventh grade, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, and in the sixth grade, we have four. So it was even a little bit of a juggling match for our middle school basketball to do an eighth grade and a seventh grade, because you were taking a little bit of both and making two teams. The sixth graders primarily, in the middle school level, have been invited to practice, but only get playing time if we need them, because it's a middle school program. Some years, we don't need them, and other years, we do. We've been needing them. So we've been making, you know, taking three levels to make two teams there.
So what I'm hearing is, is it's not a blip, a short gap here that we're missing some participation?
You know, I don't think so. I mean, like I said, I mean, this year, we had five upperclassmen, if you consider a sophomore upperclassman. I mean, we're not always going to get twelve freshmen out. If we could, that would be awesome. You know, this is kind of a free year that we've got. You know, I always say, if you can get five or six kids per class in basketball, I mean, twenty-four boys and girls, I mean, we would be varsity, J V, and a nice J V, too. We'd be, we'd be giving a lot of opportunities. You know, I think our biggest year, the year that we went to state, we had fourteen, the next year, we had eleven. You would think that, you know, going to state would bring people to your program. We had eleven kids, we were J V list a year out. And then we went, this year, if we didn't have twelve freshmen, we'd have been J V list again. And that's why I was, last year, I was really for this again. I wasn't sure we were going to get all twelve of those kids.
the all-conference, that they will not be having a J V team this year again. So it's, like I said, like Charlie mentioned, it is in a lot of the schools, and Florence already mentioned that. So we know that, that this is a trend, we see this, this is my first year here, and I was down from the Madison area, and there's a trend in the Madison area, even down in those bigger schools, that they have a harder time. You had a team like Marshall High School that won several state championships two years ago, they did not have the J V team. So this is something that's a big picture, and that everybody's trying to figure out why, if it's contact, if it's a sport or whatever, but it's a, it's a national trend, and there's statistics out there. We also talk about, we have the co-op in the junior high level, there, there is kids from Phelps that come over there. As a coach, I don't see why we don't continue that and see how it works. From what I understand, it may be two or three kids at most, and, you know, that's my opinion on the situation.
What other options do we have, Charlie?
Well, well, we could go without it, see where we end up again. It's kind of a coin flip if we're going to have, I mean, whether we go or not. You could do the full varsity co-op, which I'm presenting, or you could go a J V only co-op, which, I mean, if you're working with these kids and they have the skills and you can bring them up, and they can be helpful, and they, you know, I mean, if a kid, if you know you can only go so far in your job, how much effort are you going to give? You know? But if you know, hey, I got a bonus at the end and I can work hard for it, you know, you might get that little extra effort. I think a J V only co-op kind of handcuffs our coaches on how they could use some of those kids. You know, and it's, you know, I, I know Ryan's gone through this, I know, you know, Todd went through this last year. It's hard to coach basketball when you can't put five other kids in front of your five starters to demonstrate or play defense against or, you know.
So our options are, we kick, drag, or pull more students out on the court, or we, we collaborate with another district, basically?
Yeah. And I think our coaches and our, you know, and myself and, you know, administration, I think we do a good job kind of banging the trees and beating the bushes to see if we can get some kids out there to help our, help them out. You know, I always ask the kids, what are you doing, what are you up to? You know, unless you tell me nothing, I'm not going to say, hey, I'm doing this, or I'm doing that. Hey, great, as long as you're doing something, that's what we need. We need everybody pitched in just a little bit. So, you know, and if, like I said, you look at a school of Ryland, they had fourteen girls. I mean, Phelps just about co-op with Northland Pines, J V only this year, but the Phelps Board voted it down. They don't want to go there, they just about did.
So according to the worksheet here, is it potentially that we would have seven, seven athletes from Phelps in this co-op?
Well, they had seven this year, just so, I mean, a lot of those kids, they were like three people, three girls kind of rounded up for. Now, I believe four of those players, three or four of those players from Phelps were seniors, so that's what they had this year. I don't think, I'm, I'm projecting two or three, Mike. Three of those seven for sure, three or four were, were seniors, and the rest of them kind of came out just so, hey, I played volleyball for you, we need you to play basketball. And we would not be getting seven kids, I can tell you that for sure.
Okay.
Two or three makes a difference, you know?
There was one all through junior high, I think, right?
One all through junior high.
I played with our girls.
We've got, two of the, two of, for sure, are also playing softball with us right now. So, yes.
Yeah, the number I was told was two.
What does that do for the scheduling? So like a home game, we would have home games in Phelps?
Good question. You know, that was brought up at the meeting, what about our uniforms? I said, the only three sports that we're not co-opted in are the two basketballs and volleyball. Every other sport, we're, our uniforms are blue and white, they all say Blue Jays. I personally think that, and I'm sure Phelps would be fine with playing everything here, but I personally think if we're going to look for some help from that school, it'd probably be important to play at least one game, and I think, you know, I think one game would be enough up there. Just to keep the youth in that community, and the parents and whatever, they could see it in their school, and they know that this is them, it's part of them, you know? Baseball, football, everything's been played here. Track, cross-country, I mean, we've done everything, we practice here, we, we do everything, golf, it's all here.
All practices would be here?
All practices would be here, unless you wanted something different, but I would say all practices would be here, and that's the way it is. They've got a kind of a win timer at the end of the day, it's a study hall where they are able to grab their athletes, get them down here, and by the time we're off school, they're here, they're ready to go. I mean, we've got one, two, four, we have seven kids coming down right now. I mean, we've got one, two, four, we have seven kids coming down right now in spur spring sports. And it'll be more when the golf starts, after spring break.
Okay. All right. Terry, anything to add?
What I will add is kind of secondary now. Something of this matter should come much sooner than two weeks before or 10 days before. That, because when we met in June, our discussion, the board discussion was unless there was something that was a major change, it was, this is where we were at right now. This is a major change because we have a couple of changes here. We have a coach that has some support of it. It seems that there has been some shift in the tide that there is parental support more than when I first started here where it was very divided. And Justin has presented the request that this be considered because he has always said, as he stated in the information, co-ops are only good ideas when they benefit both schools in the agreement. And he made a point of letting admin team that I work with, that he really feels that it is important to the sustainability of the program. I'm comfortable with it being a two-year co-op. I would just say, if you're asking my opinion, I think it's difficult to go into something as a JV-only because then what do you say to that freshman student who is extremely talented? I also have strong belief in our students, our student athletes, that they are inspired to strive to be their best. And I think that's motivational. But I also am very cognizant of the parent who says, does that knock my child's ability out to have opportunity to play? So, you know, it falls on both sides. This is a shift in timing. If it wasn't an April 1st deadline, we would not be having this conversation tonight because I would have wanted to promote the parent meeting and information a little bit longer, but that wasn't the issue.
And there was only two-day notice for the parent meeting, which again, that's why your attendance was, I mean, you have a population of this, that's where I'm, my frustration is.
I tried getting this going a long time ago and between Terry being gone and Justin being gone, the two of them really never got a chance to connect. And, you know, I think I wasn't quite sure where our coaches stood on this.
I will disagree with that statement because I really think that this should have been by February, January, we should have had that conversation. And not to go there, I mean, that's not what we should be debating now, but I just, I feel that when you want full support of your community, and I think you presented a very strong case and it is different than it was in the past, you don't want everything, like you said, as a parent, to be a surprise.
Oh, I agree.
So, that's just my two cents. I put a lot of stock in what Justin has shared. That wasn't there before. I put a lot of credibility into what Tony has shared, knowing that he is part of it. But ultimately, as a board, you will have to make the decision, and I can tell you, this is one, that you're not going to please both sides. And there will be some discussion that comes after. So it's what, what are you comfortable with landing on?
I would, I would have to say that, I mean, the short term is not good. There should have been, there needed to be more parent involvement. I wasn't taking the meeting quite as positive as Charlie did. You might have had a quarter of the few people that were there pro, a quarter con, the middle, the middle was really middle. They, there was a lot of, I felt it was fairly indecisive. There's a lot of pro and con on both sides, I think, out in, out in the public with our constituents. It would really be nice if there was more clamoring for, yeah, we should really do this. I'm just not seeing it. We, I don't know, we've all, the boys program not too long ago was down to seven kids a few years ago, and now it's gangbusters numbers. I don't know, we've seen dips in all kinds of programs. You look down in some, I mean, I know it's a long ways away to look at some of the grade school, middle to upper grade school, there's some fantastic numbers in grade school. I, there's a lot of pros and cons both ways.
So I guess it sounds like we have a gap. It sounds like grade school is strong, junior high level, we're missing athletes there.
Mediocre.
Yeah. So I guess at this point here is, are we interested in just staying where we're at and hoping that the program will revive? And then what happens for the students that are in the junior high right now? And there isn't a JV, what is there for them?
You know, the other side of that, you look at, let's say the 12 freshmen do come out again, and then when the seventh graders, next year's eighth graders get there and there's eight of those kids, now you've got 20 just in two classes. Now you're starting to get on the big side.
Do you think they're there?
I, I, I don't know. I just, I would like, I would have liked some more time to get some more parent input, some more parent support.
Well, I would just remind the board that this is a two-year co-op. This is two years. And in two years, you would have the ability to make some pretty informed decisions based on that and numbers. I, I really am landing on not giving you a recommendation because I've been on this ride for so long and I know how very deep both sides go. And I completely understand where Charlie and Justin are coming from. But like I said, some of the time factor was an issue for me. If we're continuing with the middle school co-ops, which we are, it makes sense then that would we open the door for the two years for the next step progressing up? I'm just saying it's not a lifetime commitment should the board decide to say, we're going to give it a try. It's just what you're going to feel is the best way to go and then reassess where we're at.
I actually disagree with the feeling on the JV co-op. If we were to give that a try, that, that would give those kids something to play for. Because if they can, if they can add some support to the program, that would help to, I would feel that would help to promote a decision. I mean, we don't have to, if we, Charlie, this can be applied for every year, right? It's just a two-year program.
JV co-op?
No, a varsity co-op. So if we didn't apply for varsity co-op this year, we could reapply, or we could apply next year for a two-year.
I'm a little concerned too, and I'm still trying to figure out here what is the best approach here, but I was thinking we might have more athletes from Phelps.
Like I said, I know for sure three of those girls were seniors.
So are we looking to change our program and hoping to gain three? Is that?
Two or three.
Two or three.
I know there's two solid for sure, maybe a third.
Is that going to make a difference in the program?
It certainly will.
It would?
Well, I mean, okay, so here's, last year we had 11. We didn't do any JV games at all. This year we had 14 and we did, or I should say we had 16. And we did. But we had two of those girls that played very minimal minutes. So sometimes it's, a lot of them were playing three halves. I mean, we, we did what we could to make it happen. But with 11, it wasn't happening.
Okay. Good discussion. So any other questions or is anyone prepared to make a motion?
Charlie, is this a hard, is the April 1st, is that a hard date or do they, they don't have a, you can't request an extension?
I would have brought this to you in December. I mean, I've been for this for a number of years. I mean, I just see that we are on the razor's edge of losing that. And then last year, we didn't have it and it really, really hurt our kids. But that April 1st is a hard deadline. There's no, there's no wiggle. The WI doesn't vote for anyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if this situation is not going to go away...
So you're graduating, yeah, you're graduating numbers for the next two years might be three out of the program. And you're not, they're not, we're not getting rid of a lot of kids.
Mike, I would suggest you call for a motion as you did, and then if there's further discussion, the board could add their final thoughts and be over.
Who's ready? I usually try to stay out of making a motion, but I'm going to make one. I'll make a motion to approve the girls' basketball co-op with Phelps School District for 2023 through 2024 and 2024 through 2025, as stated in the agenda.
For the whole thing, for JV and varsity?
Both.
I second.
So we do have a motion second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, all called to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, Stacy, was that aye?
Yes.
Okay. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes three to one. And we will have a two-year commitment here with coordinating with Phelps. And hopefully we can gather some more students, both sides.
I agree.
To grow the program. That's really where our strength's going to be, so.
Thank you, guys.
Very good.
I think that's going to be a good thing.
All right. Next, go to F, consider approval of the new girls' hockey co-op for 2023, 2024, and 2024 through 2025.
Okay, this is a new co-op. It is not a renewal. As you know, our current co-op has been with the Rylander Houdicks. However, girls' hockey numbers are low. So we have Rylander, Lakeland, Anago, Os, eight Northland Pines, or a few schools, and Bessmer, Ironwood are going to co-op with the Northland Pines Eagles. They're going to be housing the co-op, kind of running it. They're going to be the contact school. And we've got one student that participated in the current hockey program through, at Rylander, that was Rylander, Lakeland, Anago. Now we are joining forces with Northland Pines in hopes to create a hockey team. So I think it's a good thing for us, a lot less travel for our student. Most of the games, most of the home games will be at Northland Pines, otherwise, I think you saw in that paper, otherwise, unless they can't make it work, then they would look at Lakeland, Anago, Rylander for ice time. But all practices and most of the games will be at Northland Pines.
Was it the other opportunity going to be at a very faraway school?
Uh, yeah. At one point in time, Rylander was actually looking at going to Medford.
Medford, I believe it was.
Anago, Rylander, we're looking at going to Medford. And that's, they decided not to do that, so they're kind of joining forces, okay. So it's a new co-op. Again, this is an April 1st deadline, as all winter sports are. We did have one student, freshman this year, take advantage of that. So I guess I'm asking for your new approval for that, for not just regaling.
All right. Someone prepared to make a motion?
Has this been passed by the other schools already?
Rylander's on spring break, so I think it passed theirs, Northland Pines meets Sunday Monday, but I believe from talking with the other ADs and the other...
Rylander's 20th school.
The 20th, okay. The other ADs, some of them, they were all for this.
And speaking with the superintendents, there's a very positive support of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the new girls' hockey co-op for 2023, 24, and 2024, 25, as presented.
I'll second.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four zero. All right. Thank you for that. You're still standing.
I got one more.
Consider approval of the wrestling co-op with Leona Wabino for 2023, 2024, and 24 through 2025.
This is just a renewal. So this is something that we started during co-op, or excuse me, during COVID. And it's been a good thing. However, I did kind of get a, kind of a worrisome call the other day from Michelle, the AD. Wabino had passed it already, but Leona is growing and they're really worried about getting close to that divisional line, which we are. We have 13 schools that are between us in moving up a division, so we're pretty safe. So this is going to be at, I believe, at the Leona School Board meeting tonight. So Wabino passed it. Again, this is just a renewal.
Okay.
The feelings are that we'll go through there with the, with the state division.
All right. Very good. Someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the wrestling co-op with Leona Wabino for 2023 to 2024 and 2024 to 2025, as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion by Stacy, second by Josh. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four zero. Very good.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. Next, we go to consider approval of the international Spanish trip to Costa Rica for students during the spring break of 2025.
Hello, good evening, everybody. I will be quick. I'm here to answer any questions. I'm Nicole Loesch, the Spanish teacher. I also teach PE here. And I'm offering a trip in 2025 to Costa Rica. My last trip was 2021 to Belize and we canceled because of COVID. We had five, seven students sign up. Previous to that, I did Belize with seven students in 2017. In 2015, five students to Paris in Italy. And then 2010 was Costa Rica as well. That was my first trip in 2010. So I'm, everything's come full circle. And I had a student meeting the other day and I had about 20 students that have signed up, 16 of them that are, I think, really serious in that they gave me their parents' emails. Other than that, that's where we're at. It's a nine-day trip. I'm going with World Strides and Explorica. It's one of the companies that I've gone with before. It's one of the companies that I've gone with before. Any questions?
So you've been through this before?
Yes.
So you know the protocol and everything that's required and the board policy, et cetera?
Yeah.
And so you're going to have someone to help advise?
The tour company, yeah. Is that kind of what you mean, that they're advising me?
Any parents going to be attending?
It's a, they, they want it to be a one to six ratio, so actually I have Erin Marvin, because she's interested in travel. She's one of our new teachers this year, and she's interested in traveling with students, probably while she's still here and I'm retired. So she would be like the next in line. Mrs. Kroll has also come to the meetings with me. So I would have other teachers as chaperones. I typically don't like to have parents as chaperones because they, you know, they, they're paying for their trip full price. And even though, you know, I would do some, I would get probably some sort of a discount for a teacher, I feel that the teachers are better as chaperones than parents. So, parents can come along. There's an adult price, but I also discourage that just because it's a student trip. I mean, the parents don't ride on the basketball bus, you know, so it's a student, you know, student educational. Yeah.
All right. Someone prepared to make a motion.
I have a question.
You got a question? Go ahead.
What students are this for? Is this for like the freshmen? Is this for the sophomores?
Yeah, typically, I, you know, I start, when I started here in 2010, the first trip, I tried to make it like a prerequisite of having at least Spanish one, and I've opened it up to all students. So I see all Spanish students in eighth grade. Every student has me for at least a quarter. So they know me, they know some of the Spanish. This year, I'm right now targeting the eighth, ninth, and 10th graders so that when the trip goes, it'll be senior, junior, sophomore. I'm right now not really targeting those seventh graders, but they would be freshmen and they can sign up. The tour company gives like a $250 discount to sign up early, plus it, it spreads out the payments for the parents. But they can really sign up up until that school year of the 2024, 25 school year.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a cancellation policy if they decide to back out?
There is, and that's why I stick with these tour companies rather than going on my own, you know, finding a travel agent or something. The tour company has everything laid out. I've already emailed that to the parents that are interested. You know, when you back out, how much money, 75% or whatever you get back, that's pretty much all laid out with the tour company.
Is there a minimum, minimum amount of kids that you have? I mean, I realize you have good numbers interested, but is there a minimum?
Yeah, I, I probably, my personal would be five. I think, yeah, five is the least that I've ever gone with, just because it takes so much time and planning. Also, there's optional fundraising that we've talked about. It's not that they have to do it, but that's also easier with a bigger group.
All right, very good. Sounds like an awesome trip. Someone prepared to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the international Spanish trip to Costa Rica for students during spring break 2025, as presented.
I'll second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Any further questions, comments?
Just one quick comment. I mean, I, I understand what you're getting at with the discouraging parents. I don't like you, I don't like the language of discouraging parents. That, I mean, we're, like was kind of mentioned here, we're, you know, a pretty family-knit community altogether. I, I get the hardships of taking them, but, and what you could get into, but I just personally, I don't like the discouraging.
Anecdotally, I could tell you that I was in Costa Rica that 2010 trip and another school that we consolidated with, and there was a parent on the trip that said, "Come on, boys, I'm taking my junior, senior out drinking tonight."
I, I, I get it. Like I said, I, I understand, I understand the hardships.
It puts me in a really awkward place.
I understand the hardships, and I just don't, don't like the language.
Sorry.
Nothing to apologize for. Like I said, I get it.
And just a comment too, just looking at the, some of the travel advisories. Make sure the parents do know that, it looked like effective last November, there was a change in, in the advisory.
Right.
So, just so that they're, everybody knows.
Yeah, well, we had a look at that with a couple of the trips, not just that one, but the Italy one too, there was whatever things going on at that time.
All right, very good. Call to vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four zero. Have fun. And thank you for taking that on and giving that opportunity for our students. Next, we go to consider approval of the CISA shared services contract.
I bring this to you every year. They have to make their final budget plans as of April 15th, so it has to be approved at this board meeting. There's really no big change that you will see from last year, contracting for the same number of additional days of service, 20 days. It's very important that we keep this continuity, working forward with our, working with my leadership team, which I call, which is administration, our literacy specialist, our special education. And it's also developing our professional development as it goes out to teachers. This also includes some heavy work in the special education department with our parent professionals and staff. As you realize, we're still trying to build that literacy factor and really get ourselves to be the experts that we need to be. And this is, this is the big cost in it, though it's not different from last year. I, I feel it's vital that we continue this. We are not ready to do this in-house, nor do I think it's always the best practice to just say, "We're going to do it ourselves," because you need to be exposed to the most recent research with the science of reading and all the things coming our way. I feel extremely comfortable with the relationship we've built through CISA 9, and I'd like your approval so I can get it to them. Do you have any specific questions on what any of these items would be or concerns?
Can you just maybe give everyone a brief explanation of the, the top two, their school improvement?
Okay, this, the number one, the continuous school improvement, membership services, that's what we cost, that's what we owe for belonging to CISA 9. That's them providing their, their information to us, their advice to us. I go to a monthly superintendent meeting. We are involved in their offerings for the principal networking, for the library media, for our technology. If we need help on anything that they're working with us, they are our go-to people. They're a direct line to licensing, getting those questions figured out, helping training with teachers if we do have any teachers who want to go further, or people who are looking to become trained in a certain area as a new area of, of teaching. As well as, they're the first call I picked up and said, "We are undergoing a civil rights compliance audit. I need you to be on deck," and they put a team together, and I haven't used them yet, but they have the right contacts with the right people. And I'm extremely satisfied with, with their services. I wouldn't say that about all the other Cisas in the state. CISA 9 is top-notch.
All right, very good. Any other further questions? Prepared to take a motion for a vote?
I'll make a motion to approve the shared services contract for 2023, 2024, with CISA 9 as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll call it to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four zero. Next, we go to consider approval of the addition of personal finance as a graduation requirement.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Busco and Mr. Bott to help with this. I'm going to just give you a little bit of background. We had the preliminary, and it was requested that we brought it back so you could see how it would impact our course alignment in our credits. And, which was very interesting, because as we went through some historical, we came to realize that there are certain things in our, in our credits that we have required. And I did put, I believe, a note in there that, for instance, our health is considered like a .5 credit, but it's not really equated into the total credits that we are looking for. Also, we wanted to make sure that it's not going to be something that would impact, you know, electives, because electives are very important. And with the scheduling that Ryan and I have talked about, very confident that it will not only be able to be done within the course schedule or if it would have to be something that if there's like a situation that comes up, there would be an online option too. Of course, our first choices, our kids get their, their specials, their elective courses with our staff here. But if there would be a situation where there'd be a conflict, it could be addressed. Mr. Busco, would you like to share?
Yeah, I'll just kind of echo Superintendent Maney. I think looking around at other districts, what other schools are doing, most schools are requiring personal finance as a graduation requirement. I think it's showing that we as educators, as a community, are putting a strong emphasis on making sure our young people leave this high school with a really good foundation in basic financial skills that all of us in this room frankly use, and we've all probably made some pretty good mistakes that we can all learn from along the way. So I think it's an amazing course for our students. If we have students in here today talking about the course, I, I would say that it's one of their favorites just from a content standpoint and being able to use this information after they leave this building. You know, I always tell the kids, there's two things that impacts every single person, our health and our money. So if we don't learn about those two items, then we could be at a slight disadvantage. So the course is going to be typically offset from our child and parenting course, which, which makes it fit into our student schedules very well. We also have the online option, as Ms. Maney said, around a student who has a Nicolay course, maybe has gone for a work-study or other similar circumstances.
Just today, I was on a legislative update. This is in, up for consideration this year. The original proposal was a full credit for personal finance. The legislators are now saying they're agreeing that it should be a half a credit because it's probably not as much content-rich. This does not necessarily fall under an unfunded, unfunded mandate. The reason I'm bringing it up to you is because a district such as ours, if we have this in, in place, there's a proposed $2.5 million to be up for supportive schools who are doing this. So it could bring some funding. I don't know what that would be our way. But I would say that, reading the tea leaves, this is going to be a requirement within the state, probably within the next year.
There's a great online resource. I think it's included in your board docs. It's called NGPF. It's called, stands for Next Gen Personal Finance. They're a leading nonprofit and getting all states to have legislation around all students receiving a half-credit of personal finance before they graduate high school. And they do, they have a really cool interactive dashboard that shows bills in progress, states who have introduced legislation, as well as states who have passed the legislation. So it's a, it's a, it's a great resource for us and showing the importance of it. I think it's something that we here as a rural district could really get behind and again, show our competitive advantage to a family who wants to move into this area as a course that their student would receive before they graduate.
Very good. All right. Someone prepared to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve personal finance as a .5 credit graduation requirement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Josh. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four zero. That's a good thing that we passed that.
It is.
If we wouldn't have, we would have been derelict in our duties because financially, we wouldn't have gotten the backing from the state, right?
Well, it's, it's.
So.
I'm not going to speak on behalf of what's happening there, but it does seem like it's a very positive position to put our district in.
Yep.
Besides knowing it's the right thing to do.
It's the right thing to do is enough.
Yeah.
Very good. Let's go to consider approval of Policy 3, 4, 5, dot .6, high school graduation requirements.
So this would then impact the graduation requirements. If you recall from back in 2020, the proposal when we changed back to the, the eight-period day was going for 22 credits in the year 2022, 23 credits in '23, and then 24 credits in the year 2024. Ryan helped me remember that more easily. But this does back up nicely to the children and parenting, which is a requirement. It, it doesn't change anything that we have in place now. Handbook language would be updated with this showing, and it goes ahead now, and we would change it in our policy to reflect that, that half-credit is showing. I would say that as our new policies were formed, we would go ahead and approve it tonight, and then we would bring it back next month for a second approval, which is what the processes we decided upon.
So this is the first reading?
Yes, it is.
Someone prepared to make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 3, 4, 5, dot 6.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four zero. Next, we go to consideration of quotes for the bleacher project.
Okay, and I asked Dave to be here and give us the nitty-gritty with this. Couple of different options here presented for you. The two companies that we work with or presented bids that Dave feels comfortable about are the Goodson and then the Northstar. Looked at with some options of potentially doing a reduced bid if we put in less bleachers, eliminate a section on one side as, you know, we do not have the student population or such as we have had in the past. However, we don't want to get too tight. Even though this is written as consider, I would say to you, if at looking at this and after Dave answers some more questions, we do have time to get some more information for you. I think we're working closely enough with, with the company, whoever we would be working with, that if we give them the heads up, the main thing is, we have to get it on the schedule. And we don't pay until after 7:01 anyways, but it's a matter of getting it on the schedule. So don't feel wrapped into a consider if you feel you want to have some more information come forward. But we really need to know that we've got to go ahead on projects for the summer and want to make sure that we are dealing with it that way. So, Dave, did I do okay with that one?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's good. Again, these are the bleachers in the small gym.
The small gym.
If you look at the first proposal, it shows being the same, same size as what's there right now, keeping everything the same. They are roughly 78 feet long with the rails and things like that. That would be if we did with the second, and that one quote was $105,000. If we looked at the proposal revised to the north bleachers, we would, there's three pillars, and so we'd be, we'd be between the two pillars, and that would be like a 48-foot-long bleachers, one single section. And that would be on the north end, and that would reduce it down to 88.5. The only other verbiage that's in there that they didn't correct was, it was three-phase instead of 110, or 115 power. Not single-phase, it's going to be three-phase power, running the activators.
Price is the same?
Yes, yes. So yes, the, and what we do need, you know, it does take X amount of time for them to build them, and then to make sure we can get on their summer schedule. And then what that allows us to do, to figure out our summer schedule, because we're going to be disassembling them. to figure out our summer schedule, because we're going to be disassembling them. We're going to, we're going to get Jeff Baseman involved, because he wanted to come in and redo the floor that hasn't been touched since it was built, underneath the bleacher, existing bleacher. And that will actually save us, we're pulling in and out the, the new bleacher, because it'll be new material, new, new flooring, or not new flooring, but it'll be already finished. So he'll come in, he'll, he'll just need Dave to come in and refinish those two areas where the old bleachers were. And then, uh, we can fit into the schedule of the, the company to install them. So hopefully, we're not interrupting too many things with summer schedules of running the gym time.
But that is the time that we need to get things done too.
Correct.
It's okay.
Right.
Dave, a question, pros and cons of the, um, having both sides, uh, full bleachers versus one side being full and the other partial? Besides the cost, I guess, just...
Right. I, it's been, in the last, okay, since I've been here, we, we have not used both sides to full capacity. Okay? And what did I say? Should, should we drop it down anymore? I wouldn't drop it anymore than what we would do with, with clothes, which is between those two. Um, it's just going to limit capacity seating, that's all. And if, if it's, um, you know, if, if we want to stay the same, if we, you know, as we talk about, we talk about enrollment, we talk about numbers, if our numbers aren't going to be changing, or if they're going to be declining, um, or if they're going to be staying close to the same, then, um, then I would say we could afford to, to do that. I wouldn't, like I said, again, I wouldn't necessarily want to decrease them anymore, because I, I just don't think we should do that, because, I mean, that's just me. But if, if you guys decide that's what you want to do, we can, we can look at that. But, um, with, um, you know, it, it just brings it, those bleachers would be like, it would just be between the two pillars in, in there, instead of all the way to the outside, almost to the doors. If you run out that north end of the gym, the two doors are going to the two locker rooms. You know, they're almost to the door. You know, a couple of things will be exposed. The electrical panel will be exposed, and a couple of other things exposed. There'll be a floor drain explore, exposed in one end, on the, on the south end. Um, so, or towards the high school office end, there's a floor drain, or there's a cleanup right in that area that'll be exposed. Um, but that's stuff we can probably deal with.
So there's no other opportunity to use that space for anything else? It's just a cost-saving measure, basically, because we don't fully utilize?
Right. I mean, it was, it was, I mean, Terry asked me to say, okay, what, what if we did that? She just said, get, get a quote to see where we'd be if we reduced it down, you know? And that's, you know, so, he said, that's, that's good. And, and even that, you know, if you take a look at that, and you take a look if we're going to, if we're going to be doing the scoreboards with it, um, we're, we're right at that hundred thousand. I think it was in twelve for the, for the scoreboards. We would be right in that area of, you know, if we could fit in all the parts. If we could do both of those projects in there, it's...
Personally, I'd like to see, I'd like to see, I, I don't quite agree with, with, um, keeping the seven rows. I, I think that we could, we, we just don't utilize that gym like, like they used to. I mean, that's why we have the big gym. I think if we maybe went to four, maybe three or four rows, um, just kind of coinciding with, um, Mr. Volkman's requests about having some space for the teams that's not included with the bleachers, so that, you know, when you don't have parents listening in on your conversations. Like if we went to like a three or four row, we could, one, maybe save some more money. Um, two, maybe we go to chairs with, for the, for the teams. Just opens up a little bit more gym space to utilize for other things.
We did this last, when they had the wrestling try-do-over here, um, in January. That is when we probably, that, that gym was probably at its fullest, that we had it. And we did have both sides pulled out, and we had teams on both sides, uh, fully out.
Is there any reason we wouldn't utilize, we wouldn't utilize the big gym for that?
Uh, it's just, uh, I think that night we had another event. I think we had another event that night.
Sure.
And they, they would rather wrestle in the smaller gym. It's a, it's a coach preference.
When pulled out, when pushed in, space that this would take any different than existing?
It would be the same as it is.
Exa, same?
How many rows are the bleachers now?
They are sssss, ten in the big gym, and...
No, it's just a little gym.
Let's see, what, this one is...
This one's seven.
Seven, that's what it is.
Yeah, there's seven in this one.
Are there seven rows in there?
Uh, you, you know, we, I'll take a look. There are one, two, three, four, five, six. There's eight. Coming to the top row, yeah.
Thank you.
So were you thinking, what, only three rows on the north end, or?
Yeah. Three or four. Stick with forty, stick with forty-eight foot, but then maybe only do three or four rows.
Yeah, I, I...
They'd be more of a, I realize it's not so much of a, not so much space-saving when they're closed up, but it'd be a little bit more floor space for teams' clock, and it'd be more of a financial gain, if anything.
Yeah, I don't know if I would, I mean, it's your call. I mean, it's your practice call. I mean...
Yeah, and maybe it wouldn't save us, maybe if, if it only saves us a grand, you know, then it wouldn't be worth it. But if it saved us ten...
We dropped it down from seventy-eight feet to forty, we, we dropped, what, seven thousand? You know, and then we all hope that the moment we grow, that we, we pull it out, you know?
So at the seventy-eight long and forty-eight long, are we still have seating, I mean, over capaca, I mean, more seating than what we need?
Um, it would be able to seat 509. That gym would hold 509.
And would we come close to ever needing that capacity?
Hard to say.
Outside of, like you say, the wrestling one, I can't say. I've seen one where we would need it. I could be wrong. Ryan and Todd, you guys might have better?
The doubleheader nights. I mean, not jam-packed, but those nights we have, you know, with boys and girls.
Well, we have JV university, yeah.
Those, those are busy nights. But I, I can't tell you exactly what the capacity, how much room is left.
That's all I know from me, one side of the bleachers usually.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, the other side is almost.
Students.
I don't know if I can say that. I would agree with Josh, being able to have chairs out there, not having parents, and Steve knows too, when you have people sitting right behind you, you were, it's different, so.
So would we be better off going long and then just not as many rows?
I was just going to say the same thing. Maybe do a, do the seventy-seven foot or seventy-eight foot bank, but maybe only doing four rows.
Part of your conversation earlier, Terry, was your concern about getting on the schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
So are you looking for, um, some action on the board tonight?
Well, the action that you could take tonight is if you would give us an up to, not to exceed, figure. Um, and I can gather more information if Dave can get the quote as...
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess what I want to do is, tell me what you want. So, I'll get you a price for it, and I, I can call it tomorrow, and I'll have it the next, you know, probably tomorrow.
We could also vote to give you the authority to make the decision. I mean, that's, you know...
I'd be very comfortable with that, because, you know, I would communicate with you what we found out.
So are you looking at, then, are you looking at moving the teams forward, then having a scorer's table out near the floor also then?
I think, I think the scorer's table would be, would still be fine on the bleachers. It would just be moving the teams separate off, separate in front of the bleachers.
Okay.
So were you thinking, you, you brought up the number four rows. Do you think that'd be a target to look at?
Does, um, does, when they're counting rows, does the very top count as a row?
I believe it does.
Okay.
I can, I can confirm that.
So four rows would basically cut it in half, the capacity?
Not quite.
Right?
Not quite half. It's still be on the, it's, you'd be a little over half. So, on that side, four versus seven.
We could also get the, the quote for four rows, three rows, four rows, five rows, or four rows, five rows. And then what we would really be interested in, what floor space that buys for us for the coaching and the chairs, to make sure there is adequate room for, for that to happen.
Well, we can kind of figure that. I mean, if the spacing is 24 inches, two rows, you're looking at four feet plus, plus, is that spacing in between the walking area? Is that the walking area? So you, plus, you're gaining probably another ten and, 20 inches just in the seat space.
Yeah.
So you're looking over, you're over a five-foot gain.
That's a substantial gain. That would make sense.
So we're interested in one side being full, at seven rows, and the other at four?
I would say that, personally, I would say that's acceptable.
One more?
Yep. Let's find out, Dave.
Do we want full seventy-eight feet? Do we want just forty-eight feet? Do we want one of each at four rows?
I would suggest we keep the full length if we're going to reduce the, the number of seating.
I would agree with that.
For aesthetics, for one thing.
Yep.
It makes us look modernized by having the players on the chairs, and having that, what I call a buffer zone. Not a coaching term, but that, to me, would make the most sense.
Plus then we'd cover up that floor drain, like you were talking, if we went full.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, so that, again, that's, that, that's a small gym.
That might not be covered, but close.
I'm still in the middle of getting the quote for the big gym for moving that, moving those. I haven't gotten that completely on that price yet, so I've been waiting for that.
So...
What's that?
For mov, for moving what in the big gym? I don't recall.
Well, that's, that's where we're talking about moving that bleacher back.
So we'll have that.
The same thing would be there.
You can't just, you can't just disassemble those sections? Just, just the, the upper and on the seat part?
You gotta take the top one. It, it goes reverse. You go, so you gotta disassemble it from the wall. Take it, and then it gets reconnected to the wall.
I don't know if you could leave the framework and just take the wood, just take the wood off, so there's...
Yeah, that's what I, well, like I said, I, it, I don't do that. It was like, that's what I thought too. It was, oh, we cut that right off.
Yeah.
No, we can't do that. It was like, oh, come on.
Seems like they're overcomplicating that part, but...
Yeah, when, when he says, no, you gotta disconnect them from the wall and redo them, and I went, oh, man. No, I don't want to do that. So...
Okay, thanks.
But then, in the same token, in that gym, we're looking to get the half-steps and the rails. So, up, up on each step, the half-steps with, with the, with the, with the rails of each, uh, with the aisle rails. So, that's coming in that quarter.
So we're still looking at, um, are we still looking at taking apart the, the, uh, the wood from the bleachers and reusing that?
Yes. Yep, we would, we would reclaim the wood and the iron. We even have, um, instead of just scrapping it, we're going to talk some more about it, but in a little bit of discussion with, with Nate, um, some potential that we could be using that angle iron for some of our other products, projects and stuff too. So the answer to the question is, we're doing the disassembly, and we will be reusing...
Okay.
The materials, however we choose to do so.
Yeah, a recommendation from Jeff Baseman was, he said, put, let, get the word out that you've got them, and there's people that still have, that may need those sizes of wood, that have wood bleachers, and you may get rid of that.
Okay. And then the vinyl end curtains?
Vinyl end curtain would just eliminate the kids from running or anything and stuff. I, I mean, I don't necessarily think it's a, that's a, that's more of a stack thing, you know? If you feel it's important.
I can't say I've ever seen a gym with them.
I can't either.
We were some, and I saw, but yeah, it's very rare that you do see them. I mean, it's not rare, but it's...
Yeah, okay. All right, so... So at this point, we could take a motion to authorize administration to, um, move ahead with, uh, getting bids for, uh, the seven banks on one side, four on the other, at the full length of both sides, correct?
Yep.
Uh, and moving ahead with, uh, I guess what you feel is the best proposal. That would be one potential motion. So...
I'll make the motion to give Terry the authorization to move forward with getting one more quote for seven banks on one side, four banks on the other, both at full length, and giving her authorization to move forward with the best option for the district.
Second.
All right, so we heard the motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Further questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, none heard. All right. Thank you for doing the work, and we've given you more, so... All right, we're whittling down here. Consideration of upgrade to paging and communication system.
Okay, I'm going to use the board here, so I'll see what needs to move.
Oh, that feels good.
All right, so I'm going to have three parts to this. One is to give you kind of a look at what we currently have. Two, um, look at what we want to do or what's being proposed, and then three, the costing and the reasons why we would want to move on this right now. Um, I've been here just, just under a decade, and this was a concern when I started, and it's still a concern today. I've been here just just under a decade and this was a concern when I started and it's still a concern today. I know Terry and I have had conversations over and over about this being a priority, so I'm hoping that you get the idea here as we go through. All right, it's kind of small, but current environment, this is gonna be if I if I descend into techno babble, someone can kick me 'cause some of this is probably over people's heads, but.
Michelle, you're closest.
Yeah. The Simplex fifty-one hundred is a circa nineteen ninety-three piece of equipment. This is in our MDF, our main room. It's still sitting there. It runs all of our legacy speakers. So when this was originally installed, every classroom had a speaker like this up here or something similar to that. Those were tied into your previous phone system, the same, well, I'll get to shared camp after, but. These are analog speakers. They are hardwired in and punched down to a board, which you'll see in a picture in a minute. You can't do anything with those outside of the system that's there right now. It has tape deck, CD players and mic inputs that we don't use anymore. It was pa- it is paging capable, we don't use that at this point in time, and it was a programmable bell system, which we abandoned in twenty fourteen and fifteen. And also, Dave, you can correct this, this is wrong, I'm assuming the analog clocks were tied into that prior to twenty fourteen, fifteen as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Wonder how much we paid for the CD player in nineteen ninety?
Yeah. The second component here is the Cisco Unified Communications Manager that was installed in twenty fourteen. This was I came on in July of twenty fourteen and this thing was in in motion already. So I may be blunt about some of the decisions that were made along the way. I apologize to anyone that was here at the time or had a part in that. It was supposed to replace our paging system and our phones and bring everything into the modern era using hard drive to run everything. Previous phone system was just an old phone box, very different than what we have now. The two buildings were not tied together at that time. Prior to twenty fourteen, they each had their own system, so this tied them all together in one programmable piece. We also replaced that server and made it redundant in twenty twenty, so just two and a half, three years ago. That manages our phone system, our Cisco phones that are everywhere in the district at this point. Okay, paging hardware, we installed same year. Fifty-three Valcom speakers and a number of IP speakers in they line the halls. They're in all the hallways, they're in our common areas like the commons, the gyms and so forth. So outside of the classrooms, those were new, those are still usable, just not for later. Cisco phones in all classrooms, this is where I'm gonna maybe be a little critical. The the plan at that time was to use the phones for paging within the classrooms. They did not do their homework on that. The phones were too quiet, even when you have, you know, just normal conversation in the classroom, they could not be heard. So there was a lot of wrangling with RMM at that time, it was pretty ugly. Basically, both sides didn't do their due diligence and we had to come up with a, that was my, here, you figure this out. Come up with a solution to that at that time. So what we did was we had RMM put in Valcom gateways. We piggybacked the old Simplex system onto the new one. So basically, imagine taking taking all of the components for the zones that we had set up at that time and just plugging them through one box that then tied into the new system. This is what we're still using today, okay? I'll come back to that. Single wire in Formacast is a software that I have to manage. This is where we do our bells and schedules now. It also has, we're using the nine-one-one call aware and some of the other warning systems. There's a lot more safety wise that this can do that we're not using right now because we're not, we don't have all this quite tied together. I'll talk about that more. Any questions on this so far? Okay, this these are actual photos of a messy corner in the MDF. This is where every every classroom speaker comes into this thing in the Three Lakes building and is punched in. This is what it looks like inside. That's not powered anymore, but that's the the tower with everything. This still runs because these tie through the back of it, but we don't use any of these inputs to do announcements or programs or anything like that. So this big tower is sitting there, running all of this. It does nothing else but channel this through to the new system, okay? So the big the big issue here is what zones were set up, like if I wanna page junior high. What was set up in twenty fourteen when we abandoned this thing is what's set up now. So if we had to move classrooms around, we can't do that. So we have relatively few classrooms that aren't correctly set up because we haven't really moved anything around to that degree, but there are a couple where that's an issue. All right, in shared camp, we have the same UCM, so I won't go through that again. The paging hardware, we did the same thing over there, we put the ten Valcom and IP speakers. I think there's an IP in the gym, there's an IP out to the playground. Otherwise, they're all they're all just laid into the the ceiling tile panels the same way, so they have hallways. It's a lot louder over there in the hallways than here just 'cause it's a smaller building. But they have to use, that's all they have in their classrooms for paging is phones. Now, I don't know, Todd can maybe speak to that, but it might work a little better 'cause it's smaller class sizes, maybe you can hear it. But this this is concerning, we need, they had speakers in the classrooms, but we couldn't piggyback their speakers 'cause there's no Simplex bell and page system over there. So they do just have the phones in the classrooms, that's one of my big worries. So we have no ability to use those abandoned speakers. We cannot use any of the speakers that are in the classrooms with the system 'cause they're analog and our system is more advanced. It's digital and IP based, okay? Any questions on what we've got? This is what we're proposing or what's been proposed by Heartland. We would put these Valcom units, which are very different than what we've had in all of the classrooms. I'll show you a map in a minute and the common areas. There is a twenty inch wide, looks like this, and there's a forty inch wide for the common areas like gyms and commons where it'd be bigger than this one. This is, I'll go through it, ADA compliant, so anything that we put through here, this can flash prior, especially during emergencies. So if someone is hearing impaired, they're gonna see that right away. We do have some of the independent flashers in areas right now like the tech ed lab, the band room. So if some emergency thing comes through, they flash, but we installed those separate a few years ago. Dual flasher, so both ends, text messaging can go through here, the bells, text to speech, lockdown confirmation. These have potentially a button that if we had a lockdown, all I have to do is hit it and we can get a count of everyone, you know, I'm good, everyone's in, whatever. They're two-way capable, which ours currently are not. So if I needed to page in the room two oh four, I can have a back and forth conversation, we can't do that right now. Okay, that's important. We also have just the regular one-way paging. These can ceiling or wall mount, so they would go, there's there's a fitting that they give us that goes over the top of what we have, custom fit, and then this mounts right on there, so it just makes it look nice. This would be managed by our current software and it would integrate with our current phone system and all those twenty fourteen hallway speakers. So we'd be bringing everything together. Now, just as a side note, if you were gonna do this totally right from the very beginning, you would have doors, cameras and all of this stuff tied together if possible. The way we've done this, a little bit at a time, this was first, then we did doors and most recently we've done video. So those don't all necessarily necessarily talk to each other, but this brings all of our communications together and would get us a long way towards emergency and safety features that we don't have right now. Questions on that?
Is this? Is this as advanced as advanced as we can get or are we still a step behind in this aspect?
This is what most schools are going to and is probably pretty cutting edge at this point. There's a ton of, within the safety, on the safety end of things. We have the ability and the licensing to add desktop computers and cell phones potentially if we wanted to message, you know, important information. That way we could tie that into. I had another company last year come in, that would be like rip and replace, like we'd take everything out and 'cause it's proprietary stuff. So this is what goes with what we have now. This is the most, I I did ask about, they have a more traditional like speaker with a little clock underneath that doesn't do all the texting and stuff. So we could go a step less, this this does a lot more as far as the safety end of things and to be ADA compliant and everything so that everyone gets the information they need. I'm not gonna say it's like the most advanced thing out there, but it's for a school system.
Yeah, but it's not it's not mediocre, middle, where we're gonna in two years be wishing that we did something.
No, no, I did ask about these, they said these, the twenty fourteen stuff that we had, they said that's gonna go at least a decade, if not fifteen, twenty years. There's nothing, you know, real, nothing that's gonna degrade on those, so so we're building on kind of what we've done already. This is very expandable, so if we wanted more of something, different something, we can add that on later. We do have enough capacity in our switching and our power and everything to do that.
And what about our video, Steve, as far as?
The video system is, what is that company Paladin out of Ryan, so that it's just a mom and pop shop. I would like at some point the video and the door systems to be tied together, which they're not right now. And I did I did ask, I guess, just as I'm thinking about this, I asked them about, I know our Simplex fire system is kind of approaching end of life. They don't do that and they don't, they may tie together, but these this company doesn't work with that. So, yeah, I might to answer your question, I would try to tie doors and cameras together at some point, but not necessarily with this. I I guess I don't know if there's something out there that does all of that. But how long ago was it since we did the video, three years, right before you started, Terry, I think so four?
And then we've updated.
We've put a lot of money into that.
Actually, maybe it's not like all the bells and whistles, but our video coverage is very good. The identifiable aspects is really, it doesn't have sound, but it is very, very good. We did a little tweaking at Sugar Can without having to add more of the guts, whatever you would call it, like a server or whatever. I think we're very covered and we use it daily.
This is just a, it's hard to see from where you are, but this would be, everything red on here would be new speakers. Purple is just the bigger, the bigger one that I showed you. The green and the yellow is existing stuff, so shared camp would be getting a lot more than what they have right now.
Existing you, for the green and yellow, existing usable?
Correct, correct, I don't have any of the legacy stuff on this one. Three Lakes, looks like this. Again, red would be all the classroom speakers. Purple is the bigger ones in the common areas. The green are the existing hallway, I didn't have those on the shared camp map, but they're there. Ty, I think you have about eight, four down each hallway, something like that, and maybe one or two in that back.
Yeah, there's at least three down the line and I think one outside the office, one down by the gym and then a couple down by four p.
And then we have a an IP horn in the or an IP speaker in the gym and we have a horn, I think. Or no, we actually have an IP speaker outside too, outside your systems, so. Okay.
So before you move on.
Yep.
So in the gyms, what are we looking at, how many units are are in there?
In the small gym, we'd be putting one of the forty inch. And we already have a an IP speaker, so there'd be redundant speakers, there'd be one clock unit with the messaging. In the big gym, we would have two.
Both on the same side?
Well, that's not necessarily, but that's how they mapped it in for us. We'd have to, we'd probably put them where the clocks are now on each end 'cause they're visible. 'Cause I think. What, East and West? We try to mimic where our where our clocks are now, I think. Any other questions on this one? Okay.
Nothing in the banner?
I, there are a few things I have to move around, so there would be some, we have a couple where we probably don't need them and we have a couple where we do need to put some, so, yeah, I would make sure. Every teaching area would have to have a clock and the 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 unit that you saw there. All right, so here's the bad part. Three Lakes cabling, so someone's gotta pull all this cable, punch all that down on the ends and then tie it in. And then there's obviously the the setup and the software and all that stuff, okay? So the Three Lakes cabling is your first number, Three Lakes paging, which is all the setup and all the equipment that we'd have to pay for, buy and and get here. Shared camp, same two pieces, and then the programming and setup for for the specialists to come and do that is that last item. So this is the total for the project. If Mr. Kirby and his crew does all of the cabling, which they told me that that's perfectly allowable, we would be down to this cost right here. I just have an asterisk here. All of these, the unit that I showed you, these are twenty-five percent higher than when I had this priced out last year. So is the labor if we were having them do the cabling. Their the costs for their setup and stuff either stayed the same or they reduced a little bit. So it really is the outside labor that they have coming in to do the cabling and these units. I think last year they were like seven hundred, they were in the mid-seven hundred range and now they're nine seventy. And I did look at some of the bigger warehouses like CDWG and comparable, and these guys are thirty to seventy dollars under even a big warehouse. So I think the the pricing of the units is good. I was kind of shocked that it went up as much as it did, but that's that's the world we're living in at the moment, so. Questions on the cost thing? I didn't give you the long, I mean, there are components in each of these, but this is probably what you need to know at this point. I think last year, last year's quote, this was one sixty-five and this number was one thirty-three. We did it the same way.
What's Mr. Kirby think about the cabling, I?
He said he doesn't wanna have anything else added after this one.
That's why I need to know what's going with the bleachers.
They have they have done a most, like all of our cable pulling, I think, in the past. So that's saved the district a ton of money that they're capable and Dave knows how to.
So most of it's pretty accessible and and doable and it's not?
A couple tough ones.
Sure.
You know.
But most okay.
Otherwise, we get through it.
I don't know, can you, one question that came to my mind was when you when you did like the the wire runs for the wireless system. How many, was it basically every day all summer, how much of your time is it taking up for your crew?
Oh, it didn't take us all summer to do it.
This is a bit more than the seventy-some pulls we did for the AP wireless.
Yeah, it would, this would probably be, I'm guessing, two guys a month.
Would they do some time and material on the on those tough pulls or maybe they've got some better setup?
For this company to do? We could, yeah, I'm sure we could work that out.
'Cause it's just what it is, it's where it's where a couple where the old building met where we had a new building. And there's just a couple jigs and jags that are pull extra, so, but we're aware of that now.
Sure. Learn hard with it.
All right, this is my last slide. This, the first bullet point has been my scary thought all along for the last nine years. If that Simplex system goes and it could go another, you know, ten years or it could die tomorrow, it's been there for thirty years, just about. We're in the middle of a year and we have absolutely zero paging in classrooms in this building. So we'd be relying on our hallways and our phones, so not end of the world, but it's gonna cost a lot more to do this in the middle of the year than it would be to do it this way. We we absolutely need the ability to program and make changes to rooms and things as 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 our locations change for our assigned staff. There is a, there are a ton of additional safety features included that we don't currently have. Shared camp is a big hole, we need those in classrooms over there and we'd be filling gaps everywhere else here. And I have already talked about this, brings brings everything together, our clocks, our paging, our phones, our safety stuff and our ADA compliance. And then costs keep going up, so I think the sooner we do it. And then costs keep going up, so I think the sooner we do it, the better off we're gonna be. I know it's a big project, but. Questions?
Heartland Communications, been around the block?
Yep, and we, we have a partnership, we've had a partnership with them for the last six or seven years. One of the things that you run into with, with this stuff is, even with E-Rate when we're doing like wireless and things, all these vendor, all these big companies have preferred pricing with, with certain, like Cisco, they're a Cisco shop. If I wanted to do HP or Aruba or something, another company has, they always can outbid the other one, so it's, it's just, so going out, we can't really compare apples to apples, cause no one else will even bid this, because they know, they know this company has the state stuff. So if we were doing something different than this, or using a different company, it'd be a different product. And we'd be, like I said before, rip and replace, we'd be getting rid of everything we have and starting over.
Doubling our costs.
Yeah, it'd probably be a lot more money. They might build a tie-in somewhat, like the Valcom speakers, maybe, but.
Are they pretty reliable for hidden dates, I mean, is this something that they?
Outside of delays on, on equipment, and I, Terry, do you remember what I said, I think I said six to eight weeks?
Right.
To get the, the uni- the hardware units, the cabling, all that stuff, they can get fast, but those, they're, they're six to eight now and they're, they just did this up in Pines last sum- last summer. So I've talked to them, I don't know if, if you have yet or not.
I have not.
They had a good experience and theirs was all in, and I did, you know, we'd have to look at timing of when we were paying for this or if we were gonna post, I don't know if we can even do that, like order now and bill in July, but those are options that we'd have to figure out.
Also, not that, um, we have to talk about this now, but I think Dave and I talked a little, a little bit, is of course we would like this to be done, ready to go for day one when school opens. However, if it didn't, this is one of those things that we can still be pulling cable, hooking things up in the evening. It doesn't have to be done, because we still have our system, as long as it's working, in place, so.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a September one necessity if we get delayed.
Even though we're open, but, but we have to realize our manpower too, don't wanna lose anybody in the process.
Okay, any last questions?
Not here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, someone prepared to make a motion to the paging and communication system?
Make a motion to approve the upgrade to paging and communication system as presented.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. Last page for comments and questions.
Are we, are we going the route of doing the pulling the cable or?
That's, that's a recommendation.
That's our recommendation, yes.
Do we want that in the motion?
Um, that's the way it was presented up there, I guess, so. Alright, any other questions? Alright, hearing none, I'll call it to a vote, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard, motion passes four zero, we're off and going. Yeah, this is definitely important to get that up to date. Definitely a safety thing, so I.
Still say if cabling is done.
What's that?
Still say if cabling is done in house, I guess, but semantics, I suppose.
We all recognize the total of?
One forty-three.
One forty-three.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Uh, next we go to consider upgrades to the sound system in the large gym.
And although this is listed as consider, um, in making my discussion, Mike brought these forward just to bring to the table. The sound system in the large, the large gym, you know, we, we've heard some complaints, but in Dave and I's discussion, we also know that there's a lot of user error too, that has been part of this. So, um, I guess what we're looking at is a couple of things. Number one, I do know that there is a effort that is starting and I have not been able to get further with Justin, but there is interest in fundraising through, um, the, um, Jill, Norship has some ideas and doing some raffles and stuff, maybe working with some of the other student groups. Uh, student council is also looking for a project, where we could be raising some of this money. Um, I don't have quotes for you, I guess Dave summed it up best when he said to me, what is it that we want and we will get the information? So it's here for your awareness, I also would say, we are doing this long-range plan, that's why we have them in place. I don't put this as the highest priority, like what Steve just presented should have been done three years ago. I, I, that's, that's where I put that. Um, so this is out here for, for your consideration as to, would you like to get some bids now? Or would you be more interested in, um, waiting for the long-range plan, which could be nine months old?
Terry, we, we jumped ahead.
Oh, we did?
No, 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 we, no, because I, I met with one vendor already today.
Oh, okay.
Hate to tell you that, but again, in, in trying to decide, what, what did, what's our main concern in the big gym? You know, first of all, what, what are we, are we worried about graduation? Are we worried about?
Definitely graduation for one.
And some of that we've determined is the microphone. Okay, so we can upgrade.
It's improved. It's been improved, but.
No, no.
No, he's saying now that the microphone is the problem.
Oh, the current microphone.
Right, we have the wrong microphone.
I think we changed the microphone before, um, that was determined.
We had a mic that was on there that was.
Yeah, so it, it was improved, but.
Yes, but me, meeting with, um, Tim from Jer's Music from Wausau, he's done a lot of the work in the auditorium and in both gyms. So met with him today and a meeting with Nate from, uh, Sound and Motion on Monday. But we're, we're just looking at, and Steve met with us also, um, possibly upgrading that amp, doing some re, uh, jack configurations on the walls and things like that, so we can plug different things and then add microphone jacks and things like that to different areas. And possibly looking at two wireless mics. But, um, after talking to him and discussing what, I thought that your, your, your problems, you thought were the problems and I thought graduation was probably one of the big ones. And because you get four different speakers and if, if that mic is a, when you got a pad in your mouth when you're talking, um, we, we see the same thing during the basketball games, depending on who's announcing, um, how they treat that mic.
Right.
Um, so you're not running back and, and turning things up and turning things down, and so we're, we're getting some quotes from that, right Steve?
Yeah.
And, um, so he's gonna be putting some of that together for us.
So what is the condition of the, the amp and such like that in, in the big gym?
I mean.
The amp itself, I think he thought was fine.
Right, but he's, just the inputs we were gonna try to put into it, if we ever, if we wanted to put more inputs, um, more, 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 uh, microphones and stuff into that, th- then it's only a four, four output. Right, it's a four output system and we would go do possibly a bigger system.
The other thing that he is proposing is, right now the, I don't know what you call that, the equalizer with all the different adjustable knobs up and down, that they would set that back where it wasn't accessible and, yeah, and he would, he would set those where they're supposed to be and then you'd have a main control for up or down, so that no one was monkeying with all of these different pieces, cause he's, he was confident that some of the issues are from, people just go in there and they're like, it's not working and they start moving stuff. And there's, I don't know, there's sixty or seventy knobs in there, so it's.
Yeah.
But the, the mic too, is he would get something that was more, it had a wider range and it would pick up voices better than what we're using right now.
So what I'm hearing is this, this is not gonna be a high-cost fix?
I think we can do the gyms and, uh, even, even as we talked about further down here, the next item, um, in the auditorium, he, he's gonna be looking at that also, so, but I, we can talk about that when we get to that. But I, yes, then, you know, it may be a new amp and some rejacks and some microphones.
Said the speakers themselves are.
The speakers are awesome.
Line and good, so it's not, it's not the physical speakers that are up there, it's some of the other pieces.
Sure. Okay. Alright. Um, so at this point, we don't really have anything, um, hard to consider in terms of costs. But I guess if the board is interested in hearing more information, um, we can make some motions just to, have administration bring back.
Yeah, and as soon as I get that, I'll, I'll pass it to Terry and then whatever we decide, we can.
Okay, great.
They've got this listed, just as discussion, so is there anything we can do?
It's on the agenda as consider.
Consider, yeah.
Right, type here says discussion though.
If I can just get a motion just to bring forward, I guess estimates for improvements, yeah.
I'll make a motion to, to continue pursuing with further quotes.
Second.
For upgrades to the system.
Okay, and this is for the large gym here?
For the large gym, yes.
Okay, so motion by Josh, second by Michelle, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Um, now we can just jump right to the, consider upgrades of the sound system in the auditorium. Someone just prepared to make a parallel motion.
David, do you have a couple more things to say about this?
Yeah, we, we walked in there with him after that too and, and we looked at possibly the board, uh, looked at possibly, what else we look at?
We need a replacement mic, wireless.
A replacement wireless mic, a couple of things I got. And then since then, I talked to Bethany Puffer and we're gonna be in, looking at, they were thinking that one of the big, there's some dead spots in the auditorium. And I, you know, and again, that was in ninety-four, ninety-six when that was put in. A lot of times now you see, see all these, you look up in these auditoriums and, and you'll see those curved speakers, the rack kind of them, they're, they're curved. So, so it hits more in the whole area, these are probably one directional kind of thing and if you get it, you get it, and if you miss it, you miss it. But they, they've done, you know, for, they were good at the time, that's all that was available at the time. So, um, that's something that we're gonna talk to him about more, um, cause I told him, I said, we're gonna have a meeting tonight and find out what we need to, some more ideas of what we need to find for sure, what we have to do to, to move forward and what we have to look at.
So this would probably be a more expansive cost.
This would be a little bit more expensive than the other two projects, yes.
I guess, I know, go ahead.
I know the last time we did the lights and the sound, and I think Justin has those, my file, and I get, that was when Gene was still here. It was up over a hundred thousand. Almost, yeah.
A lot of the lights are huge, huge costs.
As we looked at lighting and the sound system.
And as far as operating the equipment in the auditorium, do we have a situation where, um, more than one person knows how to operate it?
We talked about, we talked about that today, it's, we've lost that over the last seven or eight years, people that did know, don't know. No one knows, so.
So we go in there and guess, and we figure it out, and there's some rules that can, and I can half figure it out.
So that, that's part of the, the soundboard piece is the big piece there, and he would train a crew of people that, so we had some redundancy if we go ahead and put that in.
Right, so we could maybe two-step this and maybe do soundboard and controls in one and speakers maybe at another point?
You're gonna have to get pricing.
Right, right.
Give us the option.
He said the soundboard wouldn't be that bad, but I don't know what that means. So we'll see the quote.
I think it is, I think it's those things where, when they, it's like that CD that we bought in ninety-four. It's a dime now.
Yeah.
But.
That's somebody who's got a lot of CDs.
Alright, prepare to make a motion in this one.
I'll make a motion to proceed to get quotes for the upgrades to the sound system in the auditorium.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Josh, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes four zero. Alright, uh, next we go on to the school forest camp three update report.
Okay, Justin is not with us tonight, but, um, I have relatively little to report to you. We remain in the same pattern, we're, are, we're on hold. I have had a email communication from Brad Johnson from the DNR that says it is on hold pending the litigation that they are right now, um, dealing with. Bill Kresel reached out to me and asked if I had been contacted by, by DNR or any other sources, that answer is no. Uh, we have not been, um, so we are in a, a waiting pattern.
Okay.
Is there any questions that you may have? There's just not a lot to say, because this is not by, this is not under district hands, this is in a different area.
Yep. Okay, alright, well, thank you for the update. Uh, district-related positive happenings written closely on the meeting.
I can start.
Go for it, man.
It's been an action packed start to the month, uh, we had students compete in a welding competition at Nicolay on March third. We, so that was a, you know, a consortium of schools, all area schools competed and we were able to get first place and fourth place. So pretty cool to be in home, home medals, and I contribute that, obviously, uh, the, the talent of our students competing, also the robust partnership that we have with Nicolay, um, of course in conjunction with the tech ed teachers that we have. So really pep to our students and give the opportunity to go down there and compete at a high level. On March third, our band and choir students participated in the regional solo and ensemble. And I'd like to thank both, uh, Ms. Puffer and Ms. Westfall for that opportunity. And every student who participated, um, was able to move on, every high school student was able to move on to the state level competition. So another really cool accomplishment for our students. On March fifth, uh, we had the academic awards banquet and I'd like to thank, Mrs. Cole isn't here, but I was able to thank her before she left, um, for her contribution only this year, but in the last seven years or nine years, she was part of it. Um, Mr. Dizzle, of course, for emceeing the event and all the students who helped out and everybody who attended. I think it was just an awesome opportunity to acknowledge our students for all the hard work they put into their academic accomplishments. And then on March seventh, our juniors took the ACT, uh, so I'd like to thank all of the proctors and the junior high teachers who helped, uh, maintain very quiet hallways, junior high students were in passing. Of course, the proctors putting the time, preparing for the test. And what I've heard from students and the proctors, that everybody put in a hundred and ten percent effort, took the, took the full amount of time. Uh, so I'm looking forward to seeing the scores, the scores that come. From our juniors there and, uh, also the band money event, so I'd like to first of all thank Mr. Busco for preparing, I was able to go down to Mr. Busco's room the day before, we, uh, prepared the students, um, just talked about financial literacy, a lot of the terminology that they used during the event. Uh, Mr. Busco went over, uh, also gave them the tutorial on how to write checks. Um, so during the event, they were very well-prepared. So heard very good things, not only, uh, the participation, but just the overall attitude and behavior of our students who attended compared to some of the other, uh, schools that were there, so I think they represented our community and town really well. And then, uh, finally, uh, from the athletic viewpoint, uh, our boys' basketball team accomplished a regional championship this year, which is great, back-to-back regional championships, so I'd like to congratulate Coach Leachur and Coach Boltman on that accomplishment. And of course, the boys' basketball team. And then finally, Gus Fake for his state. And then finally, Gus Fink for his state appearance in wrestling. Great accomplishment for him as well.
Yeah, and one on the forensics.
Forensics.
Our entire forensics team is advancing the state. I, I'll just wanna report to you guys, I watched it for the first times, my daughter participated. Our students were so well-prepared, Heather did an amazing job with them, and it was a difference between like the other kids in the room from other schools, there was a huge difference with our kids, how they, how they did there. So I, I just applaud her for what she's done with them.
They still do that, the U of M campus down Madison?
They will, for state, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
It's the whole team.
It's an awesome experience.
So congrats to Coach Center and Coach Fink for Gus's accomplishments, bringing them to state. Thank you for that, that's what I had.
There you go.
I have a couple, Addison Sheenak took first place at the state, um, conservation speeches, so it's two years in a row we had first place at state for the age division. Uh, we did our spelling bee, Blake Joslin took first, Emily Botnick took second, so they were both sixth graders. So if you don't know, Mrs. Running and I have a little bit of a competition between speeches, spelling bee, and then G O B is the third one, and then cribbage is the ultimate. That's only because I won cribbage the last couple years. So those are kinda the things that we beat over. And then also thank you to Mr. Volk for setting up the ski trip, which we did, uh, last Friday. Four, fifth, sixth, and, yeah, four, five, six all went. No one got injured, and we had a number of kids that had so much fun that we never came in to have lunch. Some actually hot dogs as well. Overall, it was a great trip. Awesome weather again, so.
Do I understand your high school alma mater is going to state?
They are, they play tomorrow morning. Brilliant, they'll be playing, I think they're the, I think they're the second game. So I think they, I'm sorry, tomorrow afternoon, three fifteen.
All right, there you go.
Get out of class.
Yeah, I'll be chasing the buses.
Buses are early.
Actually, I coached a number of those kids, believe it or not, when I was in college, when they were very young, yep.
Yeah.
So, and a couple brothers, one of the kids' dad I know pretty well, he owns the golf course, so.
Awesome.
It's, it's always fun when kids go to state, so.
Good, good.
I have a quick one.
There you go.
So, um, Mrs. Steve's senior English class got, um, treated to pies today for National Pie Day, thanks to a little brewery that nominated her for, um, being outstanding teacher. So, um, Triggs did a little promotional thing for Pie Day and asked for people to write in little nominations on Facebook, and so someone did that. And, uh, she won, so yay! So I shared it on Facebook to kinda help promote Three Lakes too, so it was pretty cool. Russell was not embarrassed at all.
Well, he didn't have a clue. All right, very good. Thank you for all those positive happenings, and we go to WASB correspondence slash updates, anything to add there?
Um, no, other than there will be in April a, um, new board member, uh, orientation coming up. I'll make sure, Alicia, that you get that information. It is, Carrie, where is it being held?
It's being held at Lakeland, I believe.
I thought, I think, yeah, but I do have official information that I will get up to you on that. And those are very well done.
Yeah.
And, um, worth the time, so.
Yep.
And that's all I have on that.
All right, very good. Well, that brings us to our executive session. So adjourning to executive session, Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one G to confer with legal counsel who is rendering oral advice with respect to potential litigation pertaining to the School Forest trap shooting range. And B, adjourning to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction, jurisdiction, or exercises responsibility, specifically to consider staffing levels, individual staff contract, contracts, hiring of staff, and/or resignation slash retirement of staff. And I will take a motion to go into executive station, uh, session.
Make a motion to go to executive session per Wisconsin Stats nineteen point eight five one G and C, as per stated.
Second.
All right, so a motion and a second, and we'll call vote. Stacy?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mike, aye. All right, we will be going to an executive session. Thank you, everyone, for attending.